I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. We have a work session. And I'm glad that everyone was able to make it, even though it snowed a little bit. But I guess that won't keep us away. It's not that much yet, right? I'll turn the agenda over to Dr. Stallow.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of study sessions is for us to share information, to build trust, and to ensure that we understand all of the information that's being shared and have a chance to ask questions and have discussion so that efficient and effective decision-making can happen at the board table. This evening, we will be presented with a preliminary audit review. That will be followed by an enrollment update, as well as a budget update for all of us. We'll follow that up by a discussion around the district's response to the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. And from there, we will go through some policy work. Under the superintendent's relations, I do want to spend some time just updating folks a little bit. We don't have a formal, ready-to-learn update for everyone, but we would like to just talk a little bit about some of the information that's coming our way regarding the COVID numbers and some of the other things that we're working on. And that should take us to the end of this study session. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the board agenda working document, this is presented at every work session. Basically, our goals and our direction as we progress through the year. Tonight, as Dr. Stallow referred, we'll be looking at operational oversight, more of a focus on the budget, and audit, and then also the self-governance with some of our policies. So with that, we'll move on to the School Board Legislative and Community Engagement Committee report by the group.
Enrique is going to...
Enrique? Right.
He's just pulling it up.
Okay. Thank you. Finally, unmuted. You did. Thank you very much. So one of the things that we've done, we've met three times over the course of the past month, all with an intention and focus around adopting or creating a resolution on inclusion, equity, and a safe school space. So we've been working and preparing that effort, leading up towards a pair of community engagement sessions, more so listening sessions. So we had those this past week, Wednesday evening and Thursday evening, with cross-section of members from the community, who are students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members. And what we're continuing to revise that work, and we'll come forward most likely with a proposal to the school board at the next study session. So we're targeting November 23rd for that to come forward.
Did anyone, did you have anything else to add, anyone else in the committee? Any questions on the board? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. This is Melissa.
Oh, hi, Melissa.
Looks like there were three different revisions and different sorts of agendas that, from the notes that were shared with us over the last month. Question that I've received from community members is, this committee is called Public Engagement and Legislative Action Committee. And I guess the questions are, why is there a focus on inclusion and equity now in this camp, in this committee? That would be the question, the first question I have.
Do you want me to answer? Go ahead. I'll take the first stab at that. We work with engaging different stakeholders in the community. And in our meetings in the last 12 to 18 months, I would say, it became more evident that there were certain populations we weren't engaging as actively with. And so you might recall, we talked about this a little bit at our board retreat, when we had a listening session after the murder of George Floyd, to reach out to our community. And then we had talked prior to COVID, setting us back, about the possibility of, as we look at different stakeholder groups, providing more community input, more stakeholder input, we need to make sure that we're getting a nice representation of different voices. And this is an audience that we haven't, I think, had a lot of stakeholder involvement with at the board level. The district administrators and teachers have certainly been working on this over the past several years, but the board hasn't really done much. And the reason we brought it up at the retreat was that when we had our listening session, two common themes from the stakeholders at that point was, one, the school board has yet to make a statement about where we stand on equity and inclusion, especially in light of growing unrest. So they want to know what the district is, and they want to see that the board is directing the administration, and therefore the teachers and staff in this work, rather than just getting updates on it. In other words, let's make this a priority. So we have been updating the entire board at almost every meeting, letting you know what we're doing. And the board did provide majority direction to us to pursue this work going forward. So we only did so with the support of the board.
Yeah, I know that we had discussed it a little bit, but as I'm looking through some of the notes, it looks like there was a plan to invite Dr. Shrocky Holly back for board development. I know that he did, when Michael, I know you and I attended the August 22nd, 2019 mandatory staff cultural responsive training workshop. And I know that at that workshop, he stated to all the teachers that he wanted a seat on the board, that he wanted to review our policies for cultural responsiveness. He said that he wanted to teach students to reject academically, the word academically. And at that session, he used, he said, profanity is pretty effing good for us. And he said that this last year, that we'd be moving forward toward family engagement. And he's openly promoted books with white privilege. I guess I would push back, that we would entertain having someone like that, who repetitively said the N-word over and over and over again at that mandatory all-staff meeting. It was quite, it was unacceptable. It was abrasive. And I heard so much feedback from the teachers and the community that I would question any more funds. We've already donated $500,000 or more to this person and his team. And I guess I would question and encourage more questions, why we would entertain someone like that in our district, when we just can't, we can't have anything like that happen in our district.
Lee, may I respond?
Yes.
Okay. So Melissa, I did sit next to you at that training session. It was clear throughout that session that you and I were hearing the information differently. I took copious notes. I'd be happy to share them. He was talking about how to, I understand, I see them on your paper, but you and I had some disagreements sitting there about how that information was being portrayed. He, I don't even need to get into that session, but what you're doing is, he was talking about how to use vocabulary and, let's see if I can say it right, academize? Academize? Take it, when people use terms like that, for example, in the hallways, in the classroom, how do you break it down with consideration for the students in your classroom? And look at the history of that word, and what you're really saying when you call a friend the N-word, or something else. And so he was being really careful to give teachers the tools to handle what may be just playful banter that's actually hurtful to microaggressions, to blatant racist comments. He talked about implicit bias and helped us understand that. I'd be happy to discuss that at greater length. What I will say is, the reason we're looking at Dr. Holly, he didn't ask for a seat at our board. He asked if we'd like him to do one sample, tell us one sample policy with us, to help us learn to use an equity lens as we read through a policy, so that we would have a model for going forward. The reason he's on one of our minutes, that we're trying to be very careful to get to you regularly, is that we think there may be a need down the road here for the board to have some diversity and equity training, because we haven't done any for ourselves, and we're supposed to be leading the district. And if he's under a contract, and that would be part of that work, why would we go to an outside source to pay, if that's something he would be doing as part of the work he's already been contracted to do with us? So it was actually a fiscal move to look into that first, which is why it's documented. So I know that's a hotbed name, or a hot topic name. And I know that teachers have been trained by him, are actually asking for more in-depth to go beyond that, that this was not trying to sneak in a multi-thousand-dollar board training or anything like that. It was an attempt to be fiscally responsible, so that we as board could examine where we stand and do a better job directing in terms of governance when it comes to race equity and safety for all our students. Is that helpful?
Well, there were several hundred teachers in the room, and I have my notes. And it's pretty obvious, it's obvious from his materials that he's trained with, with us, with other districts. And, you know, it goes along with a very, very unsettling tilt that is starting to happen when you go down this area and you start encouraging civil unrest with their kids, some of the other equity things that we have on there, Equity Alliance Minnesota, West Metro Education Program, the WMEP. There are things also that fall in line with things that this district just cannot tolerate, when I hear from teachers. Riot training, basically. You can see things that, where their kids are encouraged to do this sort of thing.
Melissa, Melissa, it seems we're getting, Melissa, Melissa. Excuse me, Melissa. It seems we're getting a little off-topic here. This was a report from a committee that's been working on what we've told them to do. So I believe that having a discussion about whether or not we'd have Shrocky Holly come back, or how we want to address racism and rioting, isn't quite appropriate at this time. I think it would be a future discussion, unless someone has something else they would like to say.
Well, it does say Equity Alliance and the other topics on this piece that was sent to us. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Okay. Your point is taken.
And I guess my only point, I think, I just, for reference, too, is just based on the work itself and the direction given by the board is, you know, two of our strategic directions are increasing measurable student learning and reduce achievement gap as we provide equitable student opportunities through personalized learning and student engagement. And then also engage students, parents, families, and community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion. So those are, out of six strategic directions, that's two of them. And this work specifically hits those areas. So I think that's why the emphasis of it, from the board's standpoint.
But I guess to summarize, it would be that we don't look at, we don't group people in certain segments and say we're going to educate them differently. We educate all learners. We never look at their gender, or their sexual orientation, or the color of their skin. We educate everyone. And we trust our teachers. And our teachers are excelled in offering the best education. They're our greatest asset, and they're doing a great job.
Terry?
If you'd like to set a separate side...
Excuse me. Dr. Stallow is going to speak right now.
I was just going to applaud the board committee, because the work that they've been doing is learning. And one of the things that they did talk about, and one of their intents is to provide opportunities for the board to engage in some shared learning, as our staff has. So some of the names that Melissa referenced were, it was just a research process about what other districts have used, and some of the organizations that have helped other boards and other districts on their racial equity journey as well. So that was the context of some of that, is the board members were engaging in research and talking to others about the work that they've been engaging in.
Okay. I think then we'll move on. Oversight of operations, the preliminary audit review. Julie.
As Julie's making her way to the podium, I just want to start by a thank you to Julie and her staff for the many hours of preparation that they spent preparing for the audit and in the various stages of the audit. So I just want to thank her and her staff for that. It's a lot of work, a lot of time, and a very important part of our financial processes. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow. Good evening, Chair Schimmack and board members. Tonight, we will have a preliminary draft of our audit presented, and then at the November 9th board meeting will be the final audit summary presented. Tonight, we have Jim Eikten. He's a partner with MMKR. He was a big part of our audit this year, helping us through this transition into a different auditing firm, and with COVID, and the different things going on, and trying to do things a little bit more remotely than we have in the past. And so it was a great opportunity for us to learn from them. We did have a very excellent process, and we hope to continue to improve upon it in the future. And so I will let Jim explain the audit, and if you have any questions, I will be available.
Thanks, Julie, for the introduction. My name is Jim Eikten with MMKR CPAs. I'm here this evening to provide a report on the audit for the year ended June 30th to 2020. Julie mentioned, this is our first year doing the audit of the district. So just before I start, I'll try to give you some background in who I am and my background a little bit. Our firm is MMKR CPAs, Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, Rudasovich. It's four individuals that, we go by MMKR. This is my 31st year doing audits of local governments in school districts and city and municipalities. We audit about 100 local governments, about 40 school districts in and around the metropolitan area annually. This is our first year and our first opportunity to do the audit of this district, and I'm here to provide some insight on the results for the year. Just to kind of start it off, there was documents provided this evening. There are four documents that were provided, the first of which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That particular document is about, oh, 125 pages long. It is a very thorough document, really is a document that is not only following recommended requirements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, but also is a document that is being submitted to the Association of School Business Officials for Achievement and Financial Reporting. So as a result of that, it has a broader, in-depth discussion. It has an added transmittal letter. There's a number of areas that have enhancements that are beyond the standards that you have typically for a school district financial report, including multiple statistical data that provides 10 years of information. The other documents you have in front of you, the first of which is the Special Purpose Audit Reports. Those particular reports provide opinions that I'll go through in a little bit, as well as your schedule of federal awards. As I'll talk about, an audit of this nature does require us to audit the revenues and expenditures of the district receives from the US government, and it's called a single audit of federal awards, and you'll see some data in that particular document. The third document you have is a corrective action plan. As I get into the details of the audit, you'll see we had some findings to report, and there is this very specific corrective action plan that's provided as part of the documents that you'll see as part that was provided. The last document, which is on the screen, is what's called the Management Report. The Management Report is my document that I provide, that is written by us as our firm, to provide information in a document that really gives you an idea on how the audit went by reading it without actually me being here presenting it. It does follow a number of guidelines specific to required communications. It also provides information on audit results and financial trends. It really does some guidelines and information for you in a variety of areas, and I'll cover those in my presentation. So I'm going to go through that particular document. You can see in the, on the document, there are five bullet points, as I mentioned, that summarizes the audit, provides an update on the funding of public education in the state of Minnesota, some financial trends of the district that I'll get into. And then lastly, I won't get into a lot of this information on legislative summaries and accounting and auditing updates, but it does provide a nice summary of those particular data points as well. So continuing on, in the audit summary section, it is required, the first part that we talk about here is talking about the responsibilities of the parties that are involved. It is a responsibility of the district to prepare its financial report. You have an annual requirement by the state of Minnesota to provide and prepare an annual financial report. That is the comprehensive annual report that you're providing and is presented this evening. It is my responsibility to provide an opinion on those documents and on those particular financial statements. And this particular audit process, as it's guided by the AICPA, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, we provide the opinions as are required and standard. And I'll go through those individually. Middle of that page, you'll see that, the first thing is the scope and timing of the audit. The state of Minnesota requires your annual audit to be completed by December 31st. And as Julie mentioned, I'll be here, I think it's a couple of weeks, to provide the actual final audit report. What you have in front of you tonight is preliminary drafts. We will present in a couple of weeks the final audit documents. What you have here in front of you, albeit preliminary, there will not be any changes unless something comes up in the next couple of weeks. They are pretty much final. They've been approved by my office and all the quality standards that I have back at my office. So continuing on, didn't cover this. We are required to report to you if there was a change in the scope of our audit, meaning I plan to do an audit in a certain way, in a certain process that looks at an audit in a certain manner. If it changed along the way, I'm required to report that to you. I didn't change the audit process at all. Probably the best example of that would be if there were potential fraud, some irregularity that I ran into, or something like that, that I would have to report to you, and I would do that. That isn't the case here, but it is important to know that I would communicate that if it were to have happened. So the first bullet point on that, under the audit opinions and findings, relates to the, my opinion on the district's financial statements. You'll see that I issued an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is actually the opinion you were looking for. It is a clean opinion. It is the opinion that really, again, you were looking for, a clean opinion on that financial statements. That particular opinion does have what's called an emphasis of a matter paragraph in it. We did implement a new accounting standard, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 84 on fiduciary activities. That particular standard was changed or implemented specifically to student activities. GASB 84 and the standards that were put in front of us in that particular standard required that to be pulled into in what's called, you're shaking your head, you've probably heard this before, but is required to be under what's called board control. In the past, it could be accounted for separately and have its own financial statement. GASB 84 does not allow that in the standard. So it was incorporated into your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's included in your general fund, and really, there is any separate reporting of those student activity accounts any longer. And as such, we kind of emphasize that in our opinion, to say, hey, reader of this financial statement, understand this happened, we changed this as a result. So really, nothing to be concerned about there. The second bullet point is our opinion on your internal controls over, specifically over financial reporting. We only issued an opinion on items that relate to financial reporting. There are lots of controls in a school district of this nature, but we're giving an opinion specifically on internal controls. You'll see there, we issued an opinion on the financial statement adjustments, and really, that was a material weakness. I'll try to explain it a little bit as best I can in layman's terms. If you go back to last year's audit, the district had one finding, and that particular finding related to a finding on the preparation of the financial statements. What the auditor was saying, or I'm not the auditor, I wasn't the auditor, but if I were to be issuing that particular finding, I'm issuing an opinion that says, hey, hey, district, I prepared, or I assisted in the preparation of your financial statement to the degree that you need to be aware of that this was an extensive oversight, probably beyond what is recommended for a school district, for a school district of your nature. You're a pretty vibrant organization, you're a very vibrant organization, to the degree of you should have the individuals in place that they can prepare or oversee the preparation of the audit process, such that they have the expertise and knowledge to do that. That was the finding that was issued last year. We went into this process, in this financial statement, into this particular audit, saying, you know, we can eliminate that finding. The knowledge and expertise of the individuals that are on staff here at the district have the ability to prepare their own financial statements. They have the ability to oversee the preparation of the financial statements and identify, hey, here is this financial element, that's not right, you should change that. Okay? So if you, you'll note, as I go through this, I didn't issue that finding this year. That finding is gone. We said, yep, the individuals at the district have the ability to do this. So that finding is eliminated. So into what we did find, however, as we went through the preparation of the financial statements, and we went through the audit, we did find a number of adjustments. So what does that mean to the board, and what does that mean, actually? Okay. So when you look at financial statement preparation, the staff, the individuals that work in the district should be able to prepare a financial statement such that an auditor didn't make any adjustments. An auditor didn't come in and say, well, I looked at that number, and now I came up with a different number. They should be able to, be able to close their books and identify their own adjustments without an auditor telling them such. Right? What we noted here is a number of adjustments in going through that process that we identified as auditors. We said, hey, this doesn't look right. Why is it not right? Or why is it different from what we're seeing? And they ultimately came to conclusion, yeah, I think you're right, we'll have to adjust that. So when you look at these particular adjustments, all of them, almost all of them, or I would say all of them, other than one exception, relate to items in the financial statements that are outside of the fund-based accounting that you do. So that's complicated, I understand. You report all of your information using a fund-based accounting, Uniform Financial Accounting Reporting Standards, UFRs, right? And those particular financial statement standards are what's called modified cash basis. You're, in essence, reporting on almost a cash basis in those fund-based statements. The actual CAFR that you're doing incorporates a lot of things that are outside of that, including the accounting for debt, the accounting for capital assets, the accounting for the amortization of bond discounts, the accounting for OPAB, accounting for pension obligations. There is 115 pages of financial statement items that are specific to one time a year an auditor comes in and the staff does these on a one-time basis. Otherwise, they don't really do it every day. What that means is, in this financial statement adjustment point that I'm making, is we found some errors in those areas, but it really didn't have a lot of impact on the day-to-day operations of the district, because most of them were just financial reporting-related. Okay? So what does that mean to the board? You know, where should you take this? You know, what should you do with this information? Okay. This is my philosophy. This has always been my philosophy, 30 years doing this. This is an audit. This is intended to be a learning experience. That's why we're here. We're intended to help you get better, we're intended to make you better. And findings occur in an audit, they just do. That's what we're here to do. What you should focus on as a district and as a board is, well, how are we going to correct it? As a board, the one thing that shouldn't happen, it should not happen, is for me to stand up here and give you a list of findings, and then next year, come back and tell you the same ones happened again. That's not what we want. We want, here's the findings, how are we going to correct it, so that next year, when Jim Eikten comes up here again, I didn't talk about the same finding? That's the perspective that I will always say. And you'll hear me, if I get the opportunity to come back here again, you'll hear me say that. Hey, by the way, those findings that we had last year, they're gone. We corrected those. We assisted, we helped get there from here. So these financial statement adjustments, when we went through these, we went through them in great detail with the staff here. Here's what happened, here's the adjustment, here's how you're going to have to fix it so that it doesn't happen again. so that it doesn't happen again. The staff here are, are really engaged in this audit process. They were engaged in great detail with us to determine why were we making the adjustments, why these things were happening. I can't speak to past audit processes. I wasn't here for that. But from my observations of these particular transactions, this was not happening in the past. There wasn't a lot of engagement to the accountants to say, here's why you have adjustments. And part of the reason for that goes back to my opening comments, which is, the auditors prepared the financial statements. They gave you, they gave you a finding on that, right? Said, here, we prepared it, and voila, we, we don't need to engage anymore beyond that. Well, that's not really what our, what we're about at MMKR. We're here to teach you how to do this, so that we don't have these findings. So, that being said, when you look at all, kind of back to my point on these financial statements changes, there were, there was one element, when you look at this, well, there's two elements I want to dive into. There are two, there's two, two areas of weakness here. Probably half of these adjustments actually were adjusting last year's audit. We had probably three to four prior period adjustments, meaning we looked at your financial statements and identified things that were wrong in last year's financial statement. Why that is, I don't know. We, we got to the point where that number's not right, we were clearly, they weren't right, so we did a prior print adjustment. Those things happen, and I'm not here, again, to judge the prior auditor. We do, we do need to report that, hey, we did make adjustments to last year. The other, there were adjustments that related to this year, and probably the one that stands out the most in this area was, was in the area of the reconciliation of, I'll call them payroll, payroll withholdings. There is, there is accounts within your general ledger that, when you do payroll, you put the accounts in as withholdings, and ultimately, they get paid out to the vendors, be it the IRS, to the state of Minnesota, to any withholdings. There's lots of withholdings in a school district. So they, they get withheld from payroll, they get paid out to the vendor. Well, these general ledger accounts typically are at zero once paid. Money, money is held, cash gets out, they go to zero. Well, that, these accounts typically are reconciled. Every month, you would go and reconcile these accounts to make sure that the general ledger, the system, is zeroing itself out. Well, that wasn't happening. That particular reconciliation process was not happening. So when we came in, we asked about that, and they said, well, that, that doesn't, that wasn't happening. Well, so let's have that happen. So you'll see that one of the prior period adjustments is that, the wiping out and basically making that account zero, to verify, yep, we didn't, didn't necessarily find that withholdings were paid, or that, that anybody was unpaid, or that the payroll was being processed at all. The fact of the matter was that they just weren't taking to the step of reconciling those, those in and out accounts. So that was probably in the financial statement adjustment area. So, I said a lot. Anybody got any questions before I move on to the next area?
Keep going.
Keep rolling, excellent. I love that.
I do have one question. Are we set up to automatically pay out of our, out of our accounting system for those things like the payroll withholding, or is that something we still manually do on a quarterly basis? Is it?
That's a question for Julie.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was part of the issue with it zeroing out.
That is, that is not the issue that I had.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So continuing on, the second bullet point you have in front of you is the second opinion. The second opinion relates to my opinion on governmental auditing standards. So governmental auditing standards is a pretty broad opinion, but really, it's me auditing your compliance with, with, I will call them grants or aids that you're getting. This school district obviously is funded by a multitude of agencies, and with those aids comes compliance requirements. The federal government gives, has compliance requirements. The state of Minnesota, special education aid is filled with required, required elements. Title I, I mean, I go on and on and on, Save Schools Grant, all kinds of, you know, aid and categories. So we audit to verify that you have systems and procedures in place to account for those, and making sure you're complying with all those government regulations. So as you can see, I didn't have, I didn't have any findings in that particular area. Third bullet, we issued an opinion on your schedule of federal awards. The district, as I mentioned previously, receives a significant amount of federal aids. The, the federal government provides us with the list of audit standards or audit requirements in this particular area. These audit requirements do rotate depending on the program. So at a school district, typically, typically, you audit the food service program, you audit the Title I program, and the special ed programs. And they typically rotate depending on the federal standards, can be based on findings. This year, the grant that stands out is food service. The food service program we audited in particular because of COVID. There was a lot of money coming into the program, the program changed. Frankly, the federal government sent out alerts that said, hey, audit this, you know, there's money coming into school districts for summer food service program, and thus, we audited that as a risk, mostly a risk-based approach. So this, so we reported on the schedule of federal awards, which means we gave an opinion that you were able to provide that schedule appropriately. And again, I don't have any findings regarding the schedule that was put together. So continuing on, the fourth bullet point you see there is, is, is my opinion on your compliance with the major federal programs. So we are required to, again, issue an opinion on your compliance with these programs. Not so much on the schedule of the awards, but mostly, did you comply with the programs? So with the first finding you'll note there is a finding related to the internal controls over the, in this case, the child nutrition program. So the, the, one of the requirements in the child nutrition program is related to procurement. Procurement relates to the, if you will, the buying, if you will, of supplies and materials and anything, really, that's running through your food service program, needs to comply with uniform guidance. Uniform guidance is a standard issued by the federal government for, for running a food service program, or really, any federal program. So in the uniform guidance area, it is required to follow one of five paths to procure something. And you have a well-written policy, if you haven't read it, you might want to. It's adopted every year as part of the annual adoption. And in there, it lists out the five ways you can procure something in a federal program. So we tested 18 vendors, if you will, in our food service program, to determine that you did appropriate testing, or you did appropriate procuring. And we noted that four of these particular vendors, you didn't comply with the requirements that are in, in the federal program. This is a really challenging area this year, mainly because there was a lot going on, there was a lot of changes going on, and everything was moving pretty fast, if you will. And, and, and some of what was planned in this particular area changed midstream. You might have, you know, there's an example here where you, you expected to use a certain vendor for bread, and all of a sudden, you went to COVID, and you, your whole food service program was different than it was three months ago. So, so one of the requirements in this particular area is, if, if, if a one vendor exceeds $10,000 in purchases, you need to go through a different procurement process. Well, I'm sure, well, I, I know for sure, that that particular vendor, there wasn't an expectation that we're going to spend more than $10,000 with this vendor. Well, all of a sudden, our program changed, and now we did. Well, that wasn't anticipated. That particular vendor, if, if they would have known, I'm assuming if they would have known of it over 10, they would have done it differently. And how do you, you know, do you go, you stop buying from that vendor, and then go back and, well, we, we got to stop, we got to go through a bidding process? Well, this is COVID, wow, you know, we need to get some more bread. So there's, so I would caution, certainly, when you look at these findings, yes, they're findings. What are we, how are we going to correct this? Well, there needs to be an improvement in the area of these vendors to verify, or to make sure that who's ever procuring within the food service department, that is, that they're documenting it and putting it in a vendor file, so that when Jim Iton or whoever auditor comes along and says, hey, here's the vendor, how did you procure this, it's readily available. There are instances here, certainly, where we asked, and they said, I have that, it's over here, it's in this file, I'll get that for you. Well, that's not really best practice. Best practice is it's sitting in the vendor file over in accounts payable. I don't have to ask, it's sitting right there. Everything is right, readily available. There are other instances here where it was just an emergency purchase, we need, we need to get that done, but let's, let's do that. Well, there's, there's procurement in, in an emergency situation. There are procedures to follow. That wasn't happening, mainly because it's a whole different process. So there, so this particular finding, albeit something that needs to be corrected, I feel is more of a record-keeping requirement than it is a, you know, a major issue that you should be concerned about. All right? Any questions about that one?
Quick question. Most federal providers, whether it be food or health care, have to disclose whether they've been disbarred from any one of the programs.
Yep.
Is, is it okay for the school district to put that responsibility onto them through just a general questionnaire first, or is there something more, more formal that has to be put in for school district nutrition programs?
Right.
Something similar?
Okay. Can I answer your question in?
Please.
In two minutes?
Yes.
Meaning, meaning the next finding is actually going to cover it.
Oh, you will, okay, great, thanks.
Yeah. This is a good, a great question. All right. So next finding. If you look at the page, it talks about internal controls over, again, over, this is the food service program. So it is a requirement of the uniform guidance, as you said very well, that you're required to verify that every vendor is not suspended or debarred by the federal government. And as a result of the uniform guidance, they require the district to document that, hey, we, we're going to use this vendor, and we need to document that we looked it up. We looked it up to verify this vendor is not suspended or debarred. It's easily done by a website. The, the federal government keeps a website, you can log into it, there's the vendor. Yep, they're not listed. Okay? That was not happening. We, we tested for that, they, they're not, they weren't doing that. That was not happening, at least for the ones we tested. It is a challenging requirement, though, because even if you looked it up, and you, let's say you might have already, you did look it up, but if you didn't write it down that you looked it up, or did a print screen, or wrote a memo to the file that says, yep, I looked this up, it isn't something that, because the list obviously changes. So there are some added elements that we, we recommend that somebody, whoever it is, look it up, print screen, document, I wrote, I looked this up, put it in the vendor file for the suspended, suspended or debarment requirement. I think that answered your question.
My question was, can that responsibility be just sent in a questionnaire to the vendor, so the responsibility isn't adding a resource constraint onto the school district to be looking that up constantly? Because otherwise, without that in writing, they could get disbarred after?
Right.
We make an agreement with them, so you can't have somebody constantly looking it up. So how is that recommended to be done?
Yeah, great question. The, the uniform guidance requires you to do it once a year.
Okay.
It requires when you, you, when you open the vendor file that particular fiscal year, once you look it up and the vendor file's opened, and you have documentation, you can use that vendor throughout the fiscal year. So it does need to be done once a year, though.
Okay.
Every year. Great question. And again, it's really, kind of back to your, can you put the responsibility on the vendor? You really can't. It, it is the responsibility of the district to verify that. But again, it isn't a time-consuming process, because there is a website. You just log into the website, type their name, and wah-wah, you've done it. It's less than a five-minute process, I would think. Maybe not for me, I'm a little slow on the typing, but, all right? All right. So continuing on, so the, the last opinion that I provided relates to your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations. We are issued, we, we issue as part of this process an opinion on your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations. The laws that we test as part of this opinion are issued by the Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota. They provide us with a list of the laws. We do not test every law, only laws that are on their list. Their list changes. It changes based on concerns they have. If they find some school district is doing something unusual in a particular law or area, voila, it ends up on a list. You wouldn't believe how many times laws add on the list, and you wonder why it got there, and you look at the Office of the State Auditor's website, and well, they would have done an investigation in a school district and found something unusual, and voila, now they're testing, we're having us test these laws. So you'll see here that, that we issued two findings in this area. The first one relates to UFRS. You are required to follow Uniform Financial Accounting and Reporting Standards. It's a very detailed coding structure. It's actually guided by the Minnesota Department of Education creates this coding structure. We tested roughly, we tested 31 dispersments in this case, we tested 25 receipts, we actually tested 25 payroll transactions as well, and found some coding errors. Typically, you know, you'll see five of 31 dispersments and one of 25 receipts. And these coding errors, albeit, you know, small portion of the sample, when you look at, it could be a big problem if you extrapolated over the number of transactions. But ultimately, we're able to give an opinion that, yeah, you followed UFRS, you, you followed it in general, but we found some coding errors. When diving into this a little bit, you know, in talking to the staff here, and giving them their set of transactions, it typically, when you look at the, the receipts or the, excuse me, dispersments, it really goes beyond the people in the business office to the people in the departments who, who are filling out and coding these things, and maybe miscoding, or maybe using a code they've always used, or really, maybe not being as informed as they should be about coding, or maybe, maybe it could be just, I don't really, I don't find this to be important. So what does that mean, again, to your board? We wrote a corrective action plan that says, hey, we need to train people on, on proper coding. What is UFRS? What is the coding that used to be doing? Who in the accounts payable department, who are paying these invoices, do they look at this coding and take it seriously? And if, if it's miscoded, do they say, Mr. or Mrs., or whomever, this code doesn't seem right, send it back to them, to say, hey, this, this is, this should be this code? I don't know if that's happening. The corrective action plan says that it will, going forward. Somebody's going to look closer, especially in the accounts payable department, at these coatings, or even in the business office, to say, hey, we want to get this right. We don't want to have this finding going forward. We need to get these coding accurate. So second item on the, on the list is a withholding affidavit requirement. The state of Minnesota in its Minnesota statutes requires you, before making final payments, it's important to say, final payments, to contractors, that you verify that, that they're in good standing with the state of Minnesota when it comes to withholdings. What, what does that mean? It means they're, your contractors are paying their taxes, is what that means. So the state of Minnesota is requiring you to get a withholding certificate from the state, from the contractor in this case, to say, yeah, we're in good standing with the state of Minnesota. And you're required to get that particular certificate or withholding affidavit before you make final payment. So we noted, if you'll read there, I think there was one of the five contracts that we tested, that we, that, that particular withholding affidavit was actually received after the final payment. You made the payment to the contractor, and then got the withholding affidavit. Really, it kind of defeats the purpose of the, of the rule or the statute. If you knew, if you, if you found out later that, that they couldn't provide a withholding affidavit, and you'd already paid them, your leverage is completely gone. You, you got to hold off, you can't give them that check, so that they, so that you know for sure that they're getting, their withholdings are paid. So again, what's the, what's the, you know, corrective action here? Well, make sure the person that's making those final payments doesn't approve a final payment until they get the withholding affidavit on file. So we had five findings overall. Again, I'll just kind of summarize, you know, overall, all of these are correctable. All of these are taken very seriously by the staff in the, in the office, the business office here. And in terms of written corrective action, you'll see that the business manager, Julie in this case, has has signed off as the owner of the corrective action plan. She's taking responsibility to make sure that those corrective actions happen going forward. So, any questions on that?
One more. Did you make a statement whether we're following the separation of duties and concerns overall? Or is that kind of not an issue anymore?
Okay, so that's a good question. The question relates to internal controls. So in our opinion on internal controls or financial reporting, one of the requirements is that you properly segregate responsibilities. So the way to think about it is that a transaction that goes through the system has to be separated by individuals. So you don't have one person able to control a payroll transaction from beginning to end, or accounts payable from beginning to end. Audits like ours, one of the very first questions we ask, my auditors would ask, okay, I'm going to test internal controls. Do you have segregation of duties or not? They don't even start their testing without answering that question. And the answer that we got is, yeah, we do that. Okay, well, now I'm going to test your controls under the knowledge that I'm going to find segregation of duties than properly segregated. So yes, we did test that. We don't have any finding in that area, so yeah, we gave the opinion that it was properly segregated.
Are there any other questions? I think we'll see you again in two weeks.
I got more.
Oh, you have more? Oh, I thought you were done.
Keep going. All right, well, so.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'm going to, okay, so there's two parts of the audit. The first part of the audit is the compliance, and I just covered all that. The second part is the financial results, how you do financially, right? So I'm going to just kind of cover some of the financial results. There's a lot of information here, but for the purposes of time, I won't cover every little detail. But I'm going to go right here. All right, so this is page nine of the management report. So the financial results, to me, start with some benchmarking. How does the district compare to others? And we'll get into a little bit on the details around your financial results, but right here, I'm going to start with some benchmarking. So this is a graph showing the operating fund balances of the state as a comparison to expenditures. Most school districts use this ratio commonly. You use it commonly in your operating, your fund balance policies, the fund balance percentages of expenditures. This particular percentage is the statewide, the state's percentage. This is not your percentage. There's different ways to use this percentage based on, depending on the categories within fund balance that you're using. The state uses a percentage in law, which is statutory operating debt. That's their percentage, and that is the percentage you're seeing right here, okay? So you can see on this graph that fund balances statewide are pretty flat, meaning they're roughly leveling out at about 20%. Most school districts statewide have about 20% fund balance. Probably higher percentages in greater Minnesota and lower percentages in the metropolitan area. Mainly why? Oh, they're just bigger. You have a bigger operation, so you can function on smaller percentages. Greater Minnesota has smaller operations, need more, bigger number just to operate. You can see, the blue line is your particular fund balance percentage. And my first observation there is, wow, that's very stable. It doesn't waver much. Most of our clients, you'll see it kind of going up and down and up and down. And this shows a lot of stability to me. The management of the fund balance is very stable over time. Right now, it's at 16.2%, which again, isn't the percentage. I'll show you your internal percentage later. But you're slightly below average, which is actually what I would almost anticipate. You're, you know, again, within the metropolitan area, maybe a little bit outside of it. It's pretty much consistent what I would have expected coming in, without even looking at it. All right, continuing on. Hopefully, you can see this one, maybe you can't. Maybe I can dive it and look at that, I can. So this particular graph you'll see here is a comparison of general, of governmental funds revenues per student. It uses statewide profiles data to come up with revenues on a per-student basis. You can see overall, in this particular presentation, that the total revenues per student were $14,662 per student. And it includes all your funds, including the general fund, debt funds, food service funds. Based on the most readily available data, which is last year, 2019, the Seven County Metro area was $16,274 per resident. So you're roughly, what is that, about 1,500? I don't have the math in my head. Almost $2,000 per student less than the average. Everybody shaking their head, yeah, I knew that, I knew that. And you can see it right up in the general fund. You can see the general fund's property taxes is below average, your state aids is below average. Why is that? Well, mostly it has to do with referendum dollars, mostly. The makeup of your district and the referendum that's happening. So you're really operating as a district on significantly less dollars than the average statewide district as well as the average metropolitan district. I'm not going to stand here and give anything other than factual data and are you doing a good job? I don't, I'm not here to give that opinion. I'm really just here to give you the data. But you're definitely operating on less dollars than in the general fund. In the debt service fund, you're actually higher than average. Now, that would be pretty typical, to me, of a district like Prior Lake and based on its status or where you are in the growth factor. You're a growing district. You've got lots of families coming in and growth. You would expect that to be the case. So again, that is not a concern, but you can see that it does, you can even see where it increased the last year or so. So what does that mean when I look at? This is, it goes into then showing expenditures. We provide the same data when it comes to this particular category in the expenditure side of the equation. So expenditures per student in various categories. So what would you expect? Well, you're going to have less expenditures. You're getting less revenue, you would hope you'd have less expenditures, or you're just going to run out of money. And you're seeing, and that's validated. You spent, in your general fund, you spent roughly $11,729 per student when, on average, a school district in the metropolitan area spends about $13,400. Again, most of that is in the regular instruction, both categories. You can kind of see, you know, over here, we have regular instruction for elementary and secondary, and that's below average. You have special education, that's below average. So it's mostly in the instructional areas that this is happening. It is not in the administrative categories. So if you look at administrative and district support, which is mainly administration, those are actually below average when it comes to that particular area. Sites and buildings and other are pretty close to the average, as you would see. In the debt service fund, you're seeing, again, above averages, right here, 1774, 1308. And again, that really goes back to the growth factor. You have the referendum, building referendum that was passed, and that's causing that debt to be higher than average. And again, not really a concern for me. All right, so where do we stand in individual funds? So the management report does provide information on your general fund in particular. You can see, this graph shows your, the blue is the cash and investments of the district. I believe, let's make sure I got the right color, there we go. The blue is the cash and investments. The yellow is the fund balance. I mentioned previously, you have very consistent fund balance percentages. The overall fund balance of the district went down about $500,000 this particular year. Your budget reflected a decline of about $3.8 million. So you're significantly better than what was projected for the year in financial results. Now, that is a combination of revenues being better than projected and expenditures being lower than projected. Frankly, music to an auditor's ears. If I can stand up here every year and say, revenues are better than projected, expenditures were lower than projected, we all want to hear that. That means you have a conservative budget, is what I'm getting at. It doesn't always happen, but. So certainly, budget, the financial results were meeting expectations or better than what was projected. So we have a table in this particular graph, in this management report. Again, if people are trying to follow along, this is page 13. Here, we show the components of fund balance. We have non-spendable, which is really just inventory and prepaid items that you can't spend. You have restricted categorical fund balances that the state doesn't allow you to spend. They have to set aside, probably the best example is operating capital. You have items that are assigned, and the assigned categories are assignments that you personally, some are you personally assigning them, and there's other assignments in one particular that is required, and I'll get into that in a second. And then you have unassigned, which is basically available for use. So the district has a fund balance policy. On the bottom of this page, it talks about that. It says, the policy states that the district will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned and signed general fund balance of 8% to 12% of the annual budget. That's your policy, that's your guide as a school board. If you get outside those parameters, or I guess outside that policy, then action would take place, right? So at the end of the year, the total is 14.2%. So you're certainly within the guidelines of your policy at the end of the year. Fund balance is looking good. So one item of note, you see assigned fund balance up in that table. When you look at the last five years, that assigned amount was, is pretty consistent. It's pretty much the same number until you get to 2020. There's an added assignment this year called the Assigned for Subsequent Years Budget. What that means to you is, if you adopt a budget for the following fiscal year that was a deficit, you're required to assign that balance. So the negative, if you will, the deficit that was adopted is in assigned. And if it isn't in assigned, it falls to unassigned. So you're seeing a little bit of a flip-flop there in those two numbers for 2020, specifically related to the deficit that was adopted. So I think that's a pretty important distinction when you look at that. So just a couple of more graphs. I'm not going to cover that one for the sake of time. We do provide information on the revenues and expenditures. We, as auditors, love to make sure that budgets are sound and that the identification of why. These were the actual results, why isn't the budget match it? And do you know why? Can you stand up and say, this is what happened? We look for that, you know, as auditors. And I look at a category and say, so what's going on here? And the response is, well, that's because of this. Oh, okay, well, that makes sense. So if you read, if you look at the data points, you'll see that revenues were about 1.7% over budget, mostly in aid categories. Special education aid, there was a Safe Schools grant that you received that wasn't budgeted. Property taxes came in better than budget. There were some other revenue sources, specifically in the student activity accounts, that were really, frankly, hard to budget. Federal revenues were over budget, again, for a variety of reasons. And you can see all the various reasons when you look at the particular grant display. General fund expenditures are also provided here. You'll see that expenditures were under budget by about $700,000. Almost all of that goes back to COVID and the pandemic. Purchase services, supplies and materials, in a lot of cases, I won't say they went away, but certainly, they weren't at the level that they were when you had a building that was operating. It just, they just went away. Things just didn't happen. The same, and due to the closures, you had significantly less expenditures in the general fund as a result. The district does have two, you know, other funds. You can see the food service fund here that we provide has had a very positive year. I would say the community service fund did not. The community service fund's going to struggle, and did ultimately in a COVID environment. The programming that they have consistently just isn't going to be the same, given, you know, the pandemic that we're having. We also provide information on the Capital Project Building Construction Fund. $67 million was, I won't say spent, but went down in this particular year. All of those, I won't say every, we audited that $67 million to verify that we went through the right bidding requirements and that the invoices were processed properly, all of those things. You have also a couple of unique funds that are maybe not unique to school districts, but unique to government, one of which is the self-insurance fund. This is an area that school districts, probably in the last, we'll go with five to seven years, have gone to more of a health insurance under self-insured models. The self-insurance fund ended the year with an increase of roughly $900, almost a million dollars increase in fund balance, or up to $4.2 million in fund balance. This particular number is consistent with what all districts are experiencing. There was a lot of non-doctor visits, if you think about it. They weren't going to the doctor. They may have gone for COVID if they were to have that, but just your general doctor visits were way down, and thus, claims were significantly lower, thus increasing the fund balance in that particular area. The district also has what's called the Post-Employment Benefits Revocable Trust Fund. It funds your OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. This particular fund is a full accrual fund. It's actually accounted for differently than your fund balance and your general fund. And we do report a deficit in this particular fund of about $3.3 million. And I did want to talk about that only because it shouldn't be a concern to you, mainly because you issued bonds, if you will, years ago for this OPEB trust, and those money went into a trust. And those monies typically, per school district, are available until used, if you will. You're pretty much pulling the money out to the tune of the cost that you have until it runs out. After that, you're going to ultimately now use your general fund. So be it what you see here is a deficit, I wouldn't be concerned about it other than know how much money you have left. Because once it runs out, then the general fund will have to incorporate that back in. So that's the revocable trust fund. And I think that was it. I wanted to make sure I covered what I needed to cover, yeah. So overall, from the secondary part of my audit, the financial results certainly are very consistent with my expectations. Certainly, the budget that you have met expectations in terms of the knowledge and experience needed to understand the budget. And certainly, the financial results are very solid when it comes to the district overall. So, and that was really the end of my presentation. There's some more information in there, tons of more information. If you see it, there's probably, the highlight, if you get on, is the future accounting and auditing updates. There's all kinds of additional gazbes if you want to dive into those. Julie and I dived into one today that you wanted to know more information about. But that's why we put it in there, so it's mainly for the staff here. But, so I'll open it up to you for any questions.
Any more questions? Go ahead. I was just, so overall, I mean, for a first time, since you've been doing this for 30 years, well done, I mean, as far as, I mean, it's what I'm hearing. Because, I mean, you're new, relative, I mean, we've had the previous auditor for a number of years. So I know with change, there's always a little unsettledness, which is good. You know, especially when you're checking your finances. But it sounds to me like our staff and our processes are solid, very solid, and we're making the appropriate changes on the findings that you found. I do have one question on the OPEB, just to go a little bit more in detail. Since I've been on the board initially for a number of years, we used to fund that rather substantially because of that risk of that liability out there. And I know the guidance has changed a little bit on that. I guess my concern, and I think right now, and Julie can clarify, I mean, as far as anything we take out now, we just put in. We're basically replacing, is that right? Replacing what we?
Oh, you didn't?
No, sorry. So we are on a pay-as-you-go OPEB funding. So we have levied for that in the past years. And so most districts- And so most districts bonded for it, so that's why Jim's probably, and we aren't any longer levying, so I'm sure he's saying, "That must, must have been how you gained your money." But no, our district did levy for that for several years. But we have hit our, our liability in our OPEB fund. We, what's missing is we are not hitting our implicit rate liability, which, so I don't expect that we will ever need to get to that point. So what, what actually is happening, and I don't know, maybe you can explain this better than I can, but he flip-flopped the numbers where we're showing, when the past, we have showed a positive in our fund balance, and now is showing a negative in that fund balance because he's actually flipping it and saying, "We're not fully funded," which we know we're not, but that's why he's saying it's not an issue because we have hit that actual liability for those costs, that we anticipate for those costs for the future.
Oh, we have hit it? That's what my clarity is on that.
Yes, and so it's about, currently about $300,000 that we spend in the OPEB fund that we are spending down every year. That number will change as we have retirements and that kind of thing. But as far as our actuarial study, that was one of the things that we do monitor as a part of our actuarial study, is what that actual liability for that cost is, and we know that we are not funding the implicit portion of that at this point.
That's the 3.3, whatever. Okay. All right. Thank, that's it for me. Any other questions?
Can I respond to your earlier point? You asked about maybe expectations of the audit, and it went well. I'll get, I want to answer or provide some info, because I think this is very important. There's two, two aspects of that that I would say differed from the expectations. The level of, of interest and, and how, how do you want to put it? Energy that the staff put into this audit was beyond my expectations. The, the staff here were, I'm trying to use the right word, were, we want this audit to go well, we want this audit to be completed, is another good word, and we want this to move forward. Let's go. Let's get this audit done. And a lot of the audit, it's a challenging thing. It is not something that's simple. And so they were all over that. So that was a bit outside of even my expectations, like, okay, well, that's good, let's go, let's do this. The other piece of this is they didn't, we didn't expect to have this many findings, nor did they. This is not what they wanted. And that is certainly right off the bat, like, this is not what we want. So that is not, that's outside of expectations, and I wanted to share, kind of give that perspective to you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jonathan?
I, I just wanted to ask you, you mentioned, I'm assuming from, from the auditor, a lot of times when you mention things that get audited, if you have nothing to say about it, that's always a good news thing, because I like, you, you mentioned that you guys audited every transaction in the 67 or?
Not everyone, but yeah, we audited it.
You audited the $67 million of construction budget with no findings of note? So that's, I mean, I think that's just good for people to hear.
Probably the biggest piece of that is the bidding requirements that go with all that, with a lot, when you're spending that kind of money.
Yeah. And Julie, since we brought up the fact that we do have a few findings, I'm just wondering if you can briefly speak to some of the corrective measures or what, you know, what we will be doing as a result of what we found?
Yes, I can certainly do that. Not really sure which one to start. So I think for the federal findings, that did have a lot to do with the COVID. In the past, we haven't bid out the bread, it was the first year we didn't bid out bread bids, and we should have bid out bread bids because it eliminated that finding, or some, you know, one of the issues that we have. You know, it was a learning experience for us for that, and so we know now, either if we don't bid it out, we have to comply with one of the five pieces of that federal policy that we have. And then beyond that is like six more pieces that we have to comply with. So some of those things that we're implementing, so we're looking at that very closely. What's, what's the best way to do it with the staffing we, that we have? And how do we do that so that we can be efficient without overburdening our staff too? Because some of that stuff is a lot of information to be checking every time, or, you know, so we're looking at what's the best way to do that. So maybe it is spending a little extra money to bid it so that we just know it's correct, and it's done the right way. For, we're implementing a new procedure for the department portion of that, so that will be something that we've been implementing. As far as the, the coding, one of the things that we struggled with this year is staffing in my office. We were without a staff for about four months. And in, in the accounting portion, and plus we have new accounts payable staff. And so some of that is, some of that training that we have to do, plus it happened during COVID, so some of that was even more difficult for us to work through that process. And the other portion of that was, a lot of it had to do with P-cards. So when we process those P-cards, a lot of those transactions just flow through if you just let them go through, and, and if the principal or whoever the department head isn't checking those, they kind of flow through into our accounting system. And so for us to kind of come back on the back end and check them is something that we have to kind of go through and say, "How do we do that?" And so we've really eliminated a lot of our P-cards at this point. And so to try and eliminate some of that, there's a lot of other reasons why we've kind of really limited the number of P-cards with people working from home and that kind of thing, it just is more difficult. And so we've done some of that, hoping to alleviate some of that. Plus, my staff just need a little more training and a little more time to, you know, just develop some of those skills. And so we've definitely been working on it. I have to say that they are excellent staff. I'm very happy with the work they're doing. We weren't happy either, and Jim knows this, with some of these findings, we worked really hard to, you know, how do we improve this and what do we make better? But some of it just simply is, have new staff, and it just is going to be a learning experience, and, and we just have to go and work through that, and hopefully next year we'll work really hard and we won't have those findings in the future, and that's the best I can tell you at this point.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for. Last thing, I guess I will just comment on is, I'm, Michael and I, Enrique, first couple of years on this board, so we haven't been through this process as many times as others. But I will give some credit to the folks on the board who suggested that we bid the audit again and, and have a different set of eyes look at this. I, I think that that, it's a different style than we heard the past couple of times, and I appreciate that. And I think for the folks who, who suggested that that was something we ought to be doing, I think they deserve some credit publicly. I think it's a good thing.
Any other comments or questions? Mary?
I do have a question, and that's on the P-card usage and stuff like that. I, and also in general, these audits don't do a cash reconciliation at all, correct? Or, yeah?
No, the cash reconciliation is, is the responsibility of Julie and her staff.
Okay. With regards to, let's say, P-cards, the only thing we see is, you know, like a, let's say they purchase something on Amazon, or they do the bank card, and then we see the vendor's the bank card, the description is the bank card, the amount and the UFR's accounting code. I assume that what's happening in the financial state, in the financial system, because we're getting a summary, that they're actually the detailed numbers or the detailed description of each use of those? Was that looked at, or how does that happen?
You're going to have to answer that one.
Yes, we do review that as part of, so as part of our whole process, we have a whole P-card manual that people have to follow. We make them sign off on their P-card, that they will use it appropriately, and they will, you know, and there's a whole list of things that they have to do as part of the P-card. But on our end, we do monitor that and make sure, which is why, when I said earlier, we not finding anything that was, people have done incorrectly, but when COVID hit, people were working from home. And so what naturally happened is I have a P-card, I need this stuff, I'm sending it to my house. And so we quickly ended that because, of course, and you know, a lot of people don't understand what's the problem with that. And, and they don't, you know, they're, they're teachers, and they, they're saying, "Hey, I need this, and I need it for my class," and I, and I, and I get that, and I understand that. But the fact that they send it to their home, that's a liability we just can't have. So that's why we really put a limit on the number of P-cards that we have in the district, because we're still continuing on, in COVID, and we still have a lot of our staff working from home, and so we've done that. But we do monitor quite closely what they do with that. One of the areas that we're really working on is making sure that the coding now is quite correct. But we do monitor exactly what they're spending it on and make sure that it follows, you know, the expectations of the district.
Thank you. I would assume that there's probably an easier way, since we've moved so much from checks to purchasing cards and credit cards more so over the years, that it's, it's, it's less, it's, it's, it's got to be more resource constrained to try and get to that, try to get to that oversight. Okay. The only other question that I had was, you know, did you have any, you see a lot of different school districts, maybe automate something, use a different feature within the financial accounting software or something like that? Did you have any suggestions for maybe greater efficiencies for our district that, that helped or something that we could benefit from?
Nothing stands out to me in terms of, you know, a wow moment or anything. We do spend quite a bit of time early on in terms of the control, internal control processes and, and spending diving deep into those, and probably spent more time because we had to build it from scratch. Typically in audit, we already have last year's stuff, so you're, you're kind of rolling it forward and you're not diving as deep. But our auditors would have provided those recommendations verbally, you know, as part of those individual processes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Didn't mean to cut you off earlier.
No problem. Just wanted to make sure you get it all said.
Appreciate, appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on then to the enrollment and final update, budget update.
I'm just going to stay up here for this portion of this, for the revised budget discussion.
And I think I'll go ahead and kick it off. Thanks, Julie. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we'll share with you some updates and discuss the work we are doing on the current year revised budget that you approved on June 8th. We know that in the world around us, and certainly regarding our budget with the school district, a lot has changed since June 8th, and we want to provide you an update tonight and let you know our continued work as we seek, as we seek approval of the revised budget in April, or I'm sorry, in December. As you can see, and you know this, that our, our budget aligns with our priorities around our strategic plan, and we want to make sure that the resources that we use do ensure that those strategic directions and the work that we have to support those strategic directions is in place so that we can achieve our mission for all of our students.
So we could have want, wanted to really look at, you know, what is driving some of our changes in our budget. And so for the enrollment budget, you can see it's the 2021, this is what in June, what we knew back then, is we thought we would have another 125 students over the previous year. And so, and even as we went into July and we were looking back, as of July 30th, we were actually well over that by about 80 students, what we had predicted at the end of July. And so on a normal year, I would have said we probably would have even exceeded the 80 students and probably would have been back into our range of about 250 students. But of course, with everything that's happened, as of September 1, we certainly lost students in that month of August, and as of October 1, you can see the further decline of those number of students. So we went from nine, a little over 9,000 students at the end of July to 8843 at, at the end of August. And again, on October 1, we're at 8,763, you know, and typically we lose about 70 students, 75 students at our secondary level from October 1 through the end of the year. So if we want to continue on that trend, which is hard because we know that things change, and as we not, we don't know, and it's hard to look at that crystal ball for the future with, with the situation with the COVID-19 pandemic, if we continue with that, our numbers would look somewhere in like 8,690, which is about, is 235 students less than our budgeted numbers from June. That's what, I wanted you to see these numbers, I want you to think about these numbers, if this is the direction that the board agrees with us going, we would revise our budget based on that's 8,690 students. If you have other ideas or a different opinion on that, we'd sure like to hear that. We've had quite a bit of discussion about it in the administrative level about what we see, and that's why we have that listed.
The next couple of slides, we wanted to share some context into the, the numbers and the information that Julie just shared. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts collected data and information from their 43 metro districts. And regarding, this first slide talks about the overall decline in enrollment from what was budgeted. And as Julie said, we, what we are forecasting is that decline of 235 fewer students than what we had budgeted, which is a decrease of 2.6%. All other neighboring districts and other metro districts are experiencing these similar trends in varying numbers of decreased enrollment. Three of the districts of the 43 surveys, surveyed indicated a zero decline, but every other district has a decline of that, and again, that varies widely. The next slide talks specifically, because one of the other trends that I'm sure you've read about in our state and nationally, is what's happening at the kindergarten level. And you can see here that, again, many of the districts, I didn't count it out to the extent that I did with the overall, but many of our, of the districts in the metro also are losing kindergarten students. One of the things that I did also want to point out here, I know that we've, we've had a lot of questions, you know, why, where are people going, all of those kinds of things. We know some of those answers, but we don't know them all. But one of the things that I wanted to speak to is, I know one of the things that we've heard in our community, or we've gotten questions about is, did we lose so many kindergarten students because they're going to neighboring schools that have kindergarten four days a week when we're in that hybrid model of two days a week? And I can't answer that question necessarily, but I did want to point out that even in a couple of our neighboring districts that do have kindergarten four days a week, they also have lost a significant number of kindergartners. So I'm, you know, not, not saying that there's causation in any of that, but I just know that one of the questions we've gotten, and the questions we've talked about is, would we have lost as many if we had had a different model? And while, you know, we, we can't go back to that, I did want to point out that even in those, those neighboring districts that are offering kindergarten more days, they are also seeing a decline in kindergarten numbers.
Terry, can I ask a question about that? When you say lost, are we talking about kindergartners who registered?
No, I'm sorry, in the budgeted numbers.
Oh, in the budgeted numbers, okay.
Yep, that is my error. These are all fewer kindergarten students than we had budgeted for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no, thank you for asking the question.
So what I tried to do as we worked through this revenue budget, we've had a lot of discussions again about our, where are we at? We kind of did a little, that was then, this is now situation, because it's hard to go back and forth and flip through these slides and kind of keep things in, in order. And so, you know, back in June, we anticipated another 125 students, 2% on the basic formula, an increase in special ed. As you know, we get 4% of special ed revenue every year, but we also get additional revenue for growth, and so we are planning on growth in special ed again, and so there are some additional funds there. Achievement integration and MNCAP, students coming from Farmington, so you can see we had $3.8 million of additional revenue. And if we look at updating our budget based on losing 235 students, we'd only receive about $141,000 of additional revenue from the state. And our increase in special ed revenue kind of gets cut in half simply because we're losing the students. We only really have a 4% increase. Plus, we did some adjusting in how we done some special ed reporting. Plus, we did some adjusting in how we done some special ed reporting and so we're expecting a little bit more money there. So that's why that's showing only as 400,000. The other two pieces would remain the same. And so, we're really looking at only an increase of $1.1 million. That's a loss of $2.7 million in revenue. And then, again, this is now, some of the things that aren't included as part of our original, but we will be looking at as part of the revised is, you know, we have loss of gate receipts. We can only have X amount of kids or parents or spectator, spectators really is a better word for that at our events, sports and all of, all of the events that we really have. Parking fees have been reduced. We did get additional revenue from, for the coronavirus relief funds, but if you recall, those have to be utilized for things outside our budget. And so those will also be, will increase our budget a little bit. I know there's a lot of people out there that think, well, we got $2.8 million, that should cover our losses over here, that should offset and we should be great. But that's not the case because we, by law, aren't able to use those funds for anything that's in our current budget. And then, again, our approved expenditures, an increase of $2.6 million. That was then, nothing really changed there. Unfortunately, we still have the same expenditures due to how we're required to deliver our instruction. We can't reduce buses. We actually needed more teachers because of distance learning. We needed additional staff to help us. So there weren't any real decreases in expenditures anywhere. Plus, we had some additional increases in expenses. So, cost for tier one childcare, we're trying to cover as much of that under the coronavirus relief funds, but as you remember, those only go through December 30th. So we have another six months of a childcare tier one that we have to provide. And so that's about $100,000 a month that we're providing for tier one childcare that has to come from the general fund. Additional expenditures covered by the coronavirus, we're trying to show that offset there of that $2.8 million. And then I've added on here, the cost of borrowing money for cash flow. When you have that much of a flip in revenue versus expenditures, we will definitely be looking at a cash flow shortage, especially looking forward, we're probably the month of April. And so we will be looking at and coming to the board with some options for borrowing money to hit our expenditures. We haven't done that in 11 years. And so definitely, this is something new for the board. And so we'll be coming back to the board just discussing that borrowing option. And then also some cost containments that we're looking at for the current year. Supply budgets, we're definitely reviewing the needs for our supply budgets and we can reduce if we can and where, how much and where possible. Personnel, we're reviewing and evaluating all positions that become open from resignations or retirements and making sure that, do we need to fill them or what kind of position do we need for those, for our personnel? We're monitoring enrollment and making sure that maybe we aren't losing students or maybe we're kind of looking at gaining some back, that would be a great option there too. We're looking at utilities and energy savings and then transportation. We talked a little bit in the past about transportation. We know that we probably with losing 235 students, we probably would have reduced a couple bus routes, but we can't because of the hybrid and how we have to transport students in this environment. And so we haven't done that and we can't do that. However, we are going to ask the board to look at an amendment for our special ed costs for transportation. How it's set up in our current contract is that we pay them every day, but we're not transporting every day. We're transporting at different times, but we still have the exact same cost for transporting every day. And so what we're looking to do is not spend any more than we did in special ed transportation in the past, but the same amount so that we're covering our costs for transportation. We do get 100% reimbursement for special ed transportation, this needs to be in our agreement so that we make sure that we're covering those costs. And so that we can get reimbursed for that and then we're also paying that to our transportation company as well. So that's why that's out here as far as cost containment. And then Terry, if you want to talk about next steps?
Yeah, sounds great. Thanks Julie. We will continue and Julie just pointed out some of those cost containment measures that we're continuing to study and have conversations about. So we'll continue to look at that and determine what else we can do as we bring back and continue to work on that revised budget. So we'll come back to you in November with more information. We'll also, as we look at the detail around the revised budget, begin to seek approval and look at the parameters as we, you know, we're kind of in this place then when we're dealing with multiple budgets. So we'll be looking at that as we get into November and December as well. And really getting to that place of you looking at the assumptions and the parameters as we build that 21, 22 budget in the near future. Also, with the, with the legislative session starting to ramp up and us continuing to learn together what we think is on the horizon, which I'm sure none of us have a whole lot of hope for, but that's all information that helps us in some of the updates and decision making as we move forward. So, we have a lot more to share, but we wanted to, to set the stage right now with what we know. We knew that after those enrollment or October 1 enrollment numbers came, we promised we'd come back to you with an update on that. And it certainly isn't the news we wanted to share. I think we all recall, you know, when Julie presented in July and felt very hopeful about where that enrollment trend would go and then we've seen something very different from that. And again, not that we're unique, but we uniquely have to deal with our budget and that's the work that we're doing right now.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
Stacy.
I had a question. As far as enrollment, I don't know if you can speak to this, but I see October 1st, are we, I mean, I know we have a three weeks in here, is it continuing to drop, you know, these coming weeks? It is? Okay. At a normal rate or? Pretty much, okay.
The piece that's hard to know is where it's dropping.
I know, and I know it's kind of a little, I know, yeah, I'm just wondering the pace as to which it is. I mean, I didn't give you that question in advance.
That's why we're monitoring that and making sure that we're not underestimating that decline.
Right.
As well.
Yeah, that, that was my concern. So when we talk about this thing in November, you're going to have a November number? Okay, perfect. About the childcare tier one?
Mm-hmm.
Refresh my memory on this. Can we use Corona dollars for that since it wasn't necessarily?
We are using Corona dollars.
We are, okay. I just want to confirm that, so.
We are using it, but as you know, those coronavirus funds end December 30th.
Right, so we can only do it for the first half of the year, which to me seems a little ridiculous, in my opinion, because like, we're not just going to turn it off in the middle of the year. We still have to offer services.
We're required to service that, right?
So, I guess it kind of goes to the legislative part of this? Like, is there feedback going back to legislators? Or I know you're like, you're Masbo and that kind of stuff, like, on that level to like, say, is there any extension happening? I mean, I mean, are people?
Well, these are federal funds.
Right.
So they're federal funds coming to the states and the states distributing them to the school districts and other organizations as well. And so, as you know, there isn't any funding coming right now. And I'm sure, and the reason that they end December 30th is because our current, you know, when, once the election happens, things could change and so we will be, that's why everything ends on December 30th. And so we have to have everything to them and inputted. So really, it's about the 15th of December, our spending pretty much has to end so that we have time to implement all of that. And we will utilize as much as we can and we will try to get as much as we can in there, but we can't make a payment for salaries and benefits on December 30th and think that we can get reimbursed on December 30th either. So, we're really working hard to make sure that we can maximize that as well.
Okay.
Because they have to match exactly for us to get the funding for that.
Right. Okay, and then as far as parameters and that, so the plan, I just want to make sure I have this. So you'll have updated numbers on November's board work session. Is that when we're going to talk about parameters or?
We'll be bringing back some information at the board meeting as well. We're going to try as much as we can to continue this process and bring back as much information. It might not be all of it, but as much as we can at the board meeting in November and then also the work session in November.
So, and my, yeah, and my hope is, you know, once we have some of those scenarios, we're going to get like a five-year peak based on that or something like that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our intent.
Okay. That's it for me.
I have a question.
Mary? You know, when I first got on the board, I remember sitting down with you and, and asking you, you know, do we take advantage of, you know, the federal food program, some of the stuff for, let's say, medicine dispersment reimbursement on SPOD, et cetera? And some of that didn't really apply to us at that time, so.
It did. We've always had third-party billing and we've always been, except for the high school, been part of the federal lunch program.
Okay, I know that there were some things that we talked about that, that didn't apply to us or it was maybe, I don't know, cost benefit, I don't know what it was, but I was just wondering, you know, when I look at the list of stuff that maybe we could be sending back for federal reimbursement, I'm not sure if we've gone back and taken a look to make sure we're maximizing every opportunity we have to try and, you know, get some, any, any funding or declare anything or re-categorize something that would comply with a federal program?
With the COVID funding?
No, 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 not in general. I'm just, I'm asking this as a general review.
As far as I know, this probably would have been a question you could have asked our auditors, but we are maximizing every revenue opportunity that we have. The only thing that we struggle revenue-wise, getting revenue for is grants. And it's mainly because we don't have a high enough free and reduced lunch participation in order to qualify for so many federal grants. We have a 12% free and reduced price, uh, free and reduced lunch. I'm not saying this quite right, but our applications for free, those who qualify, it's only about 12%. And you really need about 30% to qualify in order to really get a grant from the federal government. And so that's where we do struggle as a school district because we just don't have high enough percentage of those students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. Other than that, I do believe that we, as much as we can maximize our revenues and expenditures, that's why we made some of those changes in special ed funding because we saw that we could really maximize those special ed revenues as much as we could to the maximum that we could. We actually had, as we went through the audit, we made sure that those numbers were correct and they are. And so, we do feel like we are maximizing the most that we can for all those programs. As you see, our food service program actually made more money this year because of the federal program and the number of meals served during the COVID, the March through June. So as far as I know, we get the, you know, such small little bits of money for title and we just don't get a lot of money for compensatory revenue and EL revenue simply because we just don't have the numbers to generate those, that revenue that we need. And so many times, the general fund offsets those programs because it's so small. However, we still have a need in those areas. So we're utilizing the general fund to actually implement those programs so we can provide a robust program for intervention and EL services, title services, we're actually supplementing that with general fund revenue.
Any other questions? Your discussions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I believe we're moving on to the transportation amendment.
This is just, and I kind of explained it earlier, and Jim and I have been working with our transportation contractors on this piece. This is, this is an amendment to our current year only because we only know what's happening this year and it's only during distance learning or district imposed, or only during hybrid learning or district imposed distance learning, that we would be paying this different amount for special ed transportation. And like I said earlier, we get 100% reimbursed for special ed transportation. We just need to make sure that we're covering our costs for special ed transportation and our contractor isn't losing money. We need our contractor to be in business so we can transport our students. Right now, they're losing quite a bit of money in special ed. And I know that we're not the only school district in the state of Minnesota doing this. There are quite a few.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. No, that's all right. So I know that this has been going on since we've been in, I mean, obviously hybrid, they've been at a deficit.
So what happened is last year, they were held harmless.
Okay.
So, but that's not the case this year. So everybody was assuming that the state would say, well, if you're in hybrid learning, you'd be held harmless. That is not true. And so, which is why we need the amendment for special education so that we're covering those costs.
So we're gonna, this is going to go back on special, whose dollars, where's this coming, the XP's dollars? Transportation, but is it really?
Special ed transportation is, but it's part of our, our reimbursement for special education.
Those are federal dollars?
They're state dollars.
State dollars. And so can we make this retroactive?
Yes.
Okay, so we're planning on doing that?
Yes.
That's what I want to make sure.
It would be, it would be for the whole year.
Okay. All right, and it's not, so, okay, so it's special ed dollars, not Corona dollars because?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Any questions about that?
Well, this will come back to the board.
It'll come back to the board for approval at the, at the November board meeting.
Okay, okay. And this is, this isn't contractual with the, with the bus company?
It is.
And you've already had that discussion?
Yes.
Okay, just want a clarification, okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the American Indian Parent Action Committee, the district response.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Dr. Stallow, I'm here with the district's draft response of our response to the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee's letter of non-concurrents. Just a quick word on the timeline, the letter from the PAC to the board and to the Department of Education was originally due March 1st. There was a delay due to COVID, granted by MDE to June 1st. We received the letter from the board, or from the PAC on September 17th and we have 60 days as a board and as a district to respond. And so this will, after discussion tonight, come to the board meeting on November 9th for action. The PAC in their letter of non-concurrents in the explanation listed seven statements or recommendations for the school district. I'll kind of go through them one by one, outlining the statement and the recommendation outlining our response. There are a few points of discussion for us to have and I'm happy to answer any questions along the way as well. Statement number one was about educating ourselves as a district and as administrators and teachers in the district about the intricacies of the American Indian Education Act. And our response to that is, there is always learning to be done and we are more than happy to learn more. We've worked with members of the Department of Education in the past, we've had them at administrative meetings, we've had them at our PAC meetings themselves, and we're happy to invite another member of the American Indian Education at the Department of Ed to come and visit our admin group again. So we'll plan to do that this, sorry, this, this year for sure. Statement two is about a formal count of the number of American Indian students in the district as the PAC believes there may be more students than are reported. And this is a tiny bit complicated. Student demographic data is self-reported by parents and families when they enroll in the district. We don't choose how students are categorized. So when parents self-select that when they enroll, there are complications that can happen if a parent chooses more than one category. And that's when a student can be categorized in the MAR system as two or more races versus Native Americans. So that can cause some, what can be seen as maybe miscounts or I know we have more students than perhaps are being reported. So one of the things we're doing, actually, we had already planned this, this week on Wednesday, is a member of the Business Department, Karina Lyons, our American Indian Education Coordinator, and I will be sitting in on a webinar from the Department of MDE about how to correctly categorize and collect this data. And so Karina is going to be working after that with families if they need to correct any information, just letting them know more about the categories they select and how that can impact funding and how that can impact our, our demographic and MARs data. So that will happen very soon. Karina is also working directly with families and students on 506 forms. And 506 forms are required to receive federal funding from the Federal Department of Indian Education. They're an indicator of being a member of a federally recognized tribe and that also is a source of funding and support for our programs. He's working with families who have not filled She's working with families who have not filled that out yet to fill that out. It's a one-time thing. Once they fill it out, it's good for their entire time in the district. Statement number three, uh, asks that the Native American liaison position would be made into a full-time salary district position with the same benefits package that teachers receive, uh, without using any funds from the Indian Education Grant for the salary. So I've outlined, uh, the budget that we use to fund Karina Lyons' salary, um, and, and some of the additions we've made to the position in the past multiple years. Uh, over the past five years, we've added hours to the position every year. It's now a full-time, uh, position that is, um, in action every day that students are in action, um, and present. And we've also added benefits to it this year, uh, starting in July. So as you can see, we use three different funding sources, two specific to American Indian Education. The first is Title VII, our EZ grant, and that's about 21% of our coordinator's salary. Uh, we use all of that for, for salary. We also use about 51% of our state funding, which is gained through the American Indian Education Aid, uh, and the I E P P that we plan and, uh, submit every year. And then we also use about 26, or about 26 to 27% of Karina's salary comes from non-American Indian-specific funding, uh, our achievement integration funding. So we currently budget $20,000 from, uh, achievement integration funding for her salary, and we've increased that from past years. So this is a potential discussion point. If you'd like to ask any questions or discuss any as a board, this, um, has been in the, the letter for multiple years.
So she is full-time, not point eight?
Yes, she's full-time.
Okay.
Um, a very flexible schedule, as you'd imagine, you know, she doesn't follow the student contact day. By any means, she works with parents and families all throughout the day, but, and throughout the summer too. We, we flex her time a bit, but she's full-time.
Well, she is full-time. So, um, just our district then?
What's that?
She just works for just our district?
Yes, yes.
Because I think initially, didn't she have another district to go to or not?
No, she was finishing out, she was a, um, a housing or mental health worker at her tribe up north, and she was finishing that out, but that's, that's finished.
I know, I, I've heard her speak of travel, so that's why I was.
Yep, no, she works fully for us.
Okay, so it's a different, okay, I didn't know it was, okay, perfect. I just wanted to.
Kevin, I had a question about that. Um, now that she's full-time, will we have a more stable curriculum for her? Because before she was really all over the board, um, will there be, uh, I know you're going into, um, maybe a class next or something like that, but is also there a language component or anything like that she's gonna be taking on?
You know, this year, I will say COVID has complicated that as well.
I get it.
I mean, she's, so that is an aspiration of ours, perhaps to integrate a Ojibwe language program, um, in the future. Right now, um, she's really working on helping, um, intervene with families. If, if students are struggling with hybrid or distance learning, if they're not connecting with their teachers, she's really working non-stop with that to support teachers as they, and counselors and administrators as they reach out to families, um, to support our, our students in the building, uh, with everything they need, from being connected to tutoring, uh, that we have at the secondary level, to connected with other community resources, to continuing the work in Native nations. So that's, s- she's done a tremendous amount of work in updating the Native nations curriculum, uh, but something like a language program is something we may aspire to.
Kevin, just help me out with the, um, with the funding portion. So one of, one of their requests is they're not, we are not using Indian Education Aid grant fund, funds for that. Just not knowing the language is, are, when I look at the sources that you're listing, are those part of that or those separate?
So what they're requesting is that you see that, that Title VII, that's a, a federal American Indian Education dollars basically. And then the, um, the second number two there is state dollars, basically, state funding. And so what they're requesting is that we don't use any of that funding from either the federal or state portion for salary.
Okay.
So that we take the salary completely out of other funds and use those to the Title VII and the state funding specifically for other programming within American Indian Education.
So is there a specific, I'm trying to remember, um, specific dollars around budget as far as, I mean, it would be just general curriculum that we would be using. Is there a dedicated portion of that that has to be, not necessarily?
No, um, you know, we, I, I think we've, we've done quite a bit of work recently with supplementing the position with achievement integration funding. Um, and there are, you know, lots of ways to use that money, uh, but we've really worked to enhance and strengthen the position. So there's no other requirement, or, I mean, I guess, that's the discussion, I guess, we could have is, do we want to pursue funding this position out of another fund?
But the reclassification of being able to, because they think there's more students that may be identifying, dollars would follow with that, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
So Karina and I, just kind of on some, um, napkin math, we're, we're looking at some of the outstanding 506 forms that we think are out there, and that could amount to somewhere around $50,000 if we really get all those nailed down.
Is it a fairly easy process for, for parents? I mean, like, once you're identified, I mean, is it a, just, like, you have to self-identify each year or?
Uh, once you do it and you're recognized, there, there are some complicating factors with lineage. You know, you have to be a certain percentage and recognized in that federally, uh, recognized tribe, so there are some complications there. But once it's, it's filled out and recognized, that's good for, so if a family fills it out for a kindergartner, it's good until 12th grade.
So there's an initial kind of hindrance?
Exactly.
I meant just, I'm just thinking of the renewal process, how much it is, but there isn't once, it's ongoing, it's fairly, okay.
No. Very straightforward.
Oh, Michael, did you have a question?
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask in this spot, and I'm trying to remember if this is from conversation or, or in that original letter. Some concern about how the time is spent between going into other classrooms and bringing that curriculum and versus working with our families. And, and I don't, I don't know if this is the place to address or to ask that. But is that continuing, uh, will we continue to explore and to discuss that?
We certainly will. I mean, Karina is an amazing systems builder, I will say, and, and she is coming in and building systems both for, you know, monitoring our students' achievement, for connecting with families, for seeing if they have a 506 form entered. I mean, you enter her office and you see systems like that, it's very clear. And so some of that work is, is sort of foundational work that she's helping to, to build that will make some of her time more available. There's no question, she's a, a single, uh, liaison for our entire district, including early childhood. And so that, by its very nature, does spread her out across every building in our district. We have Native students, um, in every building in our district. So by that nature, certainly, she is spread across all of our levels, all of our buildings.
Well, and I was just gonna say, on the compounding, if we find more students and she's still a single resource, that's not necessarily, I mean, it's a good thing, don't get me wrong, but I mean, we also have to think about the capacity there, um, going forward as if that's sustainable. You know, I think that's something we need to, you know, talk about. It's, I mean, if the numbers greatly increase.
I think there's, first of all, we need a, before it was kind of an ad hoc. And one of the things I'd like to see is a more standardized curriculum, which I think you're kind of also addressing an ongoing issue we've had in statement four about that, uh, the integration of the curriculum in general and then developing, um, because I mean, from, like you said, from early childhood all the way through 12th grade. You, you could hire 20 people right now, if you don't have a curriculum behind that to tell them what to do and how to do it and what's gonna happen, it's not gonna really help. Uh, but I know that there's been a huge, a huge desire over the many years to have, uh, some sort of language curriculum. I think there's other districts that have that, and therefore they do enjoy a much larger percentage of even our local, uh, Native population going to those districts that have those. So there's definitely a, um, there's, there's a, there's somewhat of a template in place, but we are starting from ground zero still, kind of.
I wouldn't say that.
But yeah, but I mean, you know, I mean, I, I don't know if she's like got an ever-ready battery in her or whatever, but what she was able to do in just one week was astounding, but she was also very ad hoc in, in that process. And now that she's truly full-time and here, uh, getting that system in place so that it's embedded in the curriculum, I think would be the, the, the first step, and then figuring out what the resource needs would be based upon that.
Absolutely. And I will say, since Karina Lyons has been hired, she's been full-time. So she has been full-time for, since we heard her, and I don't want to say they, uh, but it was at the beginning of the year last year.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions right here? Okay. Statement four is, uh, as you alluded to, about designing and implementing curriculum relating to Indigenous peoples and tribes who are appropriate. Uh, there's also a piece about avoiding the use of outdated and inappropriate materials in PLSAS schools, eliminating assignments, field trips, and teaching that cause unintentional harm to Native students. Uh, so we have, uh, Karina's been a part of our curriculum review committees since she started. That was very intentional from the get-go. Uh, both our English, ELA, and social studies, uh, curricula areas are in curriculum review right now. We've had our PAC actually present to our social studies team, in addition to Karina being involved, um, in order to share what their experience has, has been like. Um, and so that has been pretty transformative for social studies, and they are working really diligently now to make sure, to free their resources from biases and to make sure that any resources we do choose are free from biases or that we're addressing them. Uh, one of the challenges with any textbook is that there are hidden biases, and any textbook, uh, often has absent narratives. And one of the things we're, we're working with social studies to do is incorporate those absent narratives intentionally, and that doesn't necessarily come from a single textbook, it never will. Uh, but how do we really reach out to and, and find those primary sources to integrate those absent narratives uh, and to show multiple perspectives, which is what social studies is all about. So our social studies team is, is very gung-ho and adamant in this work. Our ELA committee has also already done quite a bit of work in, uh, diversifying our texts and our resources and making some changes even over the summer and heading into this year. Uh, we have challenges with moving curriculum review forward at the pace we would like to with COVID this year. I, I, I have to admit that we do, uh, but we're working to get those, uh, up and going again soon. Uh, we also have, uh, Karina, as you've heard before, works with dozens and dozens of teachers, uh, on projects and presentations for students. She recently presented in our TechEd high school classrooms about canoe building, um, and the native traditions involved in that. So that's just a little example. She's, you know, presented in elementary classrooms and high school fax classrooms, you name it, she's there. Uh, she's in on every IEP meeting, uh, absolutely possible with every Native family in the district. And so some of those, she's also done dozens and dozens of PD sessions for teachers around supporting Native students, around Native culture. She's presented to our admin team, uh, around similar things too, and we'll continue that without a question. She's an incredible resource. Um, we also had, uh, and we always have had, a Native American history course at our high school. That's a social studies elective that ran last year, and Karina was working really closely with the teacher in that to really update, make sure the, the curriculum presents natives as thriving in our current society, in our current world, rather than just relegated to history.
Kevin, has, has there been any, uh, coordination at all between what Karina's doing and our local SMSC?
Absolutely. She works with their education department pretty closely. She also works, she's in a network with other South Metro, um, liaisons as well. But when we were preparing way back in March, which seems like a while ago, we had ongoing dialogue with the SMSC and their education department to, uh, consult with, what they need and how they need, and that resulted in some changes and some adaptations of what we were doing.
Okay. What about, let's say, the Badothe language learning or the University of Minnesota that's starting a whole new curriculum based upon this with a master's degree associated with it?
She, I know she, she's done, she's connected with the U, um, and, and takes students on, um, college visits there. I don't know if she's specifically involved in that project, but I could certainly inquire. Stay, yep, mm-hmm. Sorry. Uh, statement five is about requiring annual training for staff, uh, and teachers at every grade level on the Indian Education Act. And one of the changes that's, uh, you'll see in this letter is that Pelsby, the, um, what used to be sort of the licensing arm of the Department of Ed has changed the requirements for teachers gaining or renewing their license to require a cultural competency requirement. And so what we have done, a part of that is specific learning around supporting Native and Indigenous students. And so what we have done internally is created an internal course for our staff modeled after a Pelsby-approved course from St. Thomas. Um, and that has some really great learning focused on supporting students from Indigenous nations. And so you'll see that as teachers begin to renew their licenses, they will be required to complete that or a, a similar and, and a complimentary course. Like I said, Karina's presented at, at many, many administrative meetings and will continue to provide professional development for teachers at any professional opportunity development or, uh, professional development opportunities we have, and that will continue. Uh, statement six is a relatively simple one, providing mid-quarterly updates to the liaison and the PAC on the following. Essentially, student achievement data, um, some of the interventions we're doing to help and support students and families and how they're going. Um, and that's a simple one, we will. Uh, the Department of Education has recently released a, a Native American student-specific dashboard in their data center, so that makes it a little easier for us. But, uh, we provided that, um, basically twice each year, and we can provide that mid-quarterly. That's an easy thing. Uh, statement seven is also another relatively easy one. Um, starting two years ago, I worked with, um, our, our then, our former coordinator on a project to procure and hang tri- or flags from all of our tribes represented in the state in, uh, Parley Lake High School Commons. I wrote a letter to each one of the tribal leaders, and so far we've, we've received four of the flags. And I believe, or three or four, I forget. Um, and we're working with the other tribal leaders to either, um, ask for a flag or to purchase one or to get one to hang in the commons. We have some of them. We didn't want to hang them last year because of the construction in the commons, uh, but that will be done this year. Any other questions? We enjoy, I mean, I enjoy a really positive relationship with Sarah Wheelock, our chair. Uh, we meet monthly as a leadership committee that's with Karina, the, um, Secretary of the PAC, and Sarah and myself. We meet monthly to keep ourselves connected and abreast. Um, it's been challenging during COVID and different, but everything is.
Other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to board governance, um, policy. Um, the first policy review will be policy 521, and I believe Jeff is presenting tonight.
Good evening, Chair Shimick, members of the board. Dr. Stallow, I'm here tonight to present policy 501 on behalf of, of Deb, Deb Anderson. Um, we are a little out of sequence with 521, so forgive the, the fact that it sort of seems to be coming out of nowhere. But the reason for that is, is we've been working with our legal counsel on this policy in particular. Our current one is considerably out of date, and so as you see what's indicated there, the one that we currently have in place is totally and completely struck through. Um, and so to bring the policy into alignment with our procedures, uh, you see the new proposed 521, which is drafted from our legal, put into our, um, policy format, um, so that better matches our, our, the procedures for, um, families following this policy as well as, um, as well as the safeguards and parental student rights of Section 504. So again, this is tonight for our first read. As I mentioned, the reason why we're bringing it forward is, it's at the recommendation of our legal that we update this policy.
Jeff, do you have any specific changes to this policy? I mean, it is a lot more involved policy, but, um, anything specific to highlight?
Pretty much, what the disconnect was, is that the verbiage from the policy wasn't matching the procedures. And so the new policy better matches and better brings into alignment how we would respond and follow through our procedures within the policy. So a couple of things, um, safeguards, uh, the, I think, current safeguards with a 20-day timeline for having a section, uh, Section 504 hearing. Um, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to meet that deadline of the 20 days is one of the things that we need to correct here. Um, current safeguards state that parent, uh, might be able, or may be able to recover attorney fees if the parent prevails, but that's unlike IDEA, and again, there's no provision in Section 504 that you, that parents would be able to recover that. And then we've also just cleaned up some, um, like the headers, uh, for reading and, and locating those relevant provisions for statute. Yep.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Just, um, this is the annual, right? This is the annual policy, I believe, isn't it? Didn't we just do this in July?
I think all of the policies are, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Jeff, when you guys did this, did you start with the standard policy that's, that's currently in place with other school districts? And then make adjustments to it, or how did that?
We started with our current, we started with our current policy realizing that it, it was, there were some changes that were coming relative to, to this one in particular. And so that's why we relied so heavily on our legal counsel in working through this one. So I can't, um, I know that was a conversation that Deb was having with our legal counsel, and I think we deferred. and I think we deferred to her expertise in going through, making sure that this policy was, was written the way it was supposed to be written.
Okay. Hey, this is a first read, so it'll come back.
Yes. Thank you very much.
We have no first reading of policies this evening. Moving on to second readings, policy 204, school board member violation of policy. If you recall, we've had this on discussion at a number of meetings. A subcommittee was formed to formulate a new revised policy, and this is what's being presented tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to that subcommittee to present.
Feel free to pipe in, guys. So the first one, the first 204, what's in our format, the general statement of policy, is our draft version of the collaboration of Enrique, Mary, and myself. We kind of looked at different, you know, policies around, and then some of the stuff that we were able to gather on our own, and we had a lot of discussion about it. Couple things to highlight, I think, that we liked, you know, is listing the potential remedies, not in a step format, just because, you know, there is, you can't really think of every situation, but the fact that there are so many different situations that any of those could be used as a corrective action, I think, was kind of important to us, because we started just talking amongst ourselves, just as, you know, what could these situations look like? And they're all varied, so, and then really sticking with the theme of, you know, kind of coming out of the last board meeting, of having it be an education tool, and something that, you know, we don't want to have to go down very often, but if we do, that there is corrective action in the sense that the member can, you know, redeem themselves, basically, and where it's, can be a more casual, like as you see in the first one, one-point private conversation, I think that, you know, is in almost all the policies that we saw, that was kind of like a first conversation. And so that was kind of important to us as well. And then I think we just kind of stated, you know, the removal of the board member piece was, is basically statute, and as we have talked about in the past, that's just on here as a note that that is a law. I mean, there isn't really anything particular in that, other than that that is the law. And so I think with that just being the law, and there's no steps around it, or any type of thing, I think that this kind of provided some type of conversation point and a way for that learning piece. And I think the one thing, too, we wanted to say was that this isn't anything that is a first time for anybody, like another new board member, or anything like this. This is after willful and repeated violations. So it's not like, oh, I misspoke, or, you know, and then we're going to take you down. It's not like that. That's not what this is for, and this is purely for us, board members, no one else. I mean, obviously, staff and other things have their own policies and things, but I think it's just kind of a gray area where we tried to have it be a learning tool, and I'll give it up to the other two, if they want to make any comments.
Enrique? Do you want to say anything, add to what Stacy said, or?
It was a lot of fun working with this group. Yeah, I think Stacy did a very nice job of articulating that this is not at all really meant to be punitive, it's more about education and bringing a board member back into compliance. We talked a little bit about a mentor, mentee type of a situation, but ultimately, it's about what do we need to do as a board to collectively bring another individual back online that might have stepped out of line? And it's not just a single instance, it's repetitive patterns of behavior. So hopefully, what you read here aligns with the spirit of that overall message.
Well, I know one thing that hit me was Enrique's follow-up, because we made him the scribe, and he did a great job during the meetings. And the most impressive thing was he actually came back, and after, I don't know, two hours on a Sunday, and then another almost four hours on a Wednesday or Thursday night that we met, he actually came back and said it was fun. I was, I was like, oh, good. So, no, but I agree with what everyone said, and I think the most important statements are those first three paragraphs, because they kind of basically, and the reason why we moved so much information up into those three is they're kind of the preamble to say, okay, here's how everything's kind of going along, but if we need to go, then, then here's a more formal procedure, so it's consistent. And then, like Stacy said, the potential remedies were not assigned to any one area. It's basically, here are the options available, and that was really important for us to be able to get across and bullet them, and specifically not number them, so it didn't appear that it was in any type of way hierarchical, or in a procedural format. And the same thing went with the way that the complaints and the investigation language goes. It wasn't bulleted or numbered or anything like that. It was more or less to be able to use that as a reference point, knowing that if anything became serious, then it probably would be out of the board's control anyways, it would be more of a legal situation. So I thought that it came, it came, it came together with the three of us very, very well. And I'm kind of, I'm very happy with the result.
And I just want to clarify, so the 5C1, that 204, okay, 5C1, 204, that policy is, I mean, we basically got through that. That's where we had discussed everything and kind of ended. The second, 5C2, was information that Mary had brought forward. We didn't really get to discuss that as far as, a little bit, I mean, I would say. We didn't like go into detail about any of that kind of thing. So as far as to speak to that, I mean, I guess I wouldn't speak to this as much as I'm speaking to the previous part. I'm just saying consensus was gained on the 5C1. The 5C2, we kind of determined was very procedural, and we didn't really get that far in that discussion. So I kind of put it out there as other considerations. I didn't know, you know, Mary can speak to it more since she brought that information forward, but where we wanted to go with that, I think we just put it out there. If that's something that we want to see with, or any type of language like that, that would be additional work, as far as I'm concerned, as far as committee, because that, we didn't really go into.
So you're referring to the first two pages of this policy as the policy?
Correct. I just, I just wanted to clarify that, yes. And I didn't, we didn't go, we had a, you know, it's not that we had a difference of opinion, it was like hour four.
Right.
And we just, we were just, we didn't get to the point where we, and I just said, let's bring it back and see where we wanted to go with it.
Well, what we kind of did was talk through it. We focused more on the first two pages, and then the areas that we, that were more procedural, like Stacy said, we grouped them underneath, and then kind of cleaned them up. I think the most important thing we did was, when we read through them, is we want to make sure that we weren't contradicting anything. That was the biggest concern, because the language was all kind of all over the place at first. So we went through and read through it, and each one of us kind of said, well, we have to take at least this sentence out, because we already handled it up here, or, or it kind of contradicts the general flow of the top part, to try and be more, or less punitive in nature, and, and more based upon the circumstance and the options. And then the rest of it kind of fell into the actual procedures. But again, they're not, you know, the more prescriptive portion, but on purpose, they were not numbered or anything like that, just so it would be more open, and, and have the ability to be used if we needed it to be. So that's kind of, I think that's, that's kind of what we came to conclusion, and that's why it's, it wasn't like, you see the top 1, 2, 3, 4, and that's as far as we got with an actual step process. The rest of it was more or less, let's see what applies based upon the circumstances. So leave it a more open, because there's no way you can come up with every possible scenario.
Right. Michael?
I was just going to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. You feel like that additional material that you gave us is incorporated well enough into these, this two-page proposed policy that you're asking us to approve? Is that correct? You feel like that input is included in those bullet points enough for what we need?
No, the, the stuff on the bottom, under, under the underlying piece, is supplementary, it's not included, and the top. The top is supposed to be the more, apply it as you need it, and one of the things that we did do when we looked over the language at the bottom was to make sure it wasn't contradicting any, any, the, the, the kind of general sense. Now, the bottom half, we didn't talk about it nearly in depth as, as, as the top, simply because of those reasons in general. And we did kind of talk about the fact that it would be potentially beneficial to have counsel look over it, to make sure that there wasn't anything in there that should be taken out. There's a couple of things, I think, that we did talk about, is if a complaint is frivolous, yes, maybe it's, you know, put in there formally, but we wanted some language in there. We don't know if that language is, is appropriate from a legal perspective of how you would actually do something like this in a procedure, but, but it was, it was worth leaving in here. But really, the idea was to, for, for us as a board, because we wanted to go into more the educational, is to focus on the top piece, like you said, the first two, and then the last two were supplementary. And if there's things in there that should be taken out, because we shouldn't be putting them in there, or whatever, then that's, that's something that we kind of threw out to say, okay, should we have a legal counsel look at that? You know, can we say this? Can we talk about the process of the investigation? Or is that something that would be then, that would then go to something outside of our hands anyways?
Yeah, just as a follow-up.
I'm a little confused here.
Is this a four-page document or a two-page?
It is, it's a four-page, it's a two-page document with a two-page supplement.
So would that have to be approved as part of our policy?
Well, that's something we need to discuss.
Yeah, I think that's where the discussion.
Supplement or procedure? I mean, because the, anything after.
I feel like, yeah. I mean, I think this is where we got into hour four, and we were kind of like, okay, we can't, we can only go so far. We have really good consensus on these first two pages, and then let's bring it to the board on where we're at with this. And so, is that about right for everybody? Enrique, does that, does that seem right? Enrique? Yeah. So, I got the head nod, for those of you listening. And, so yeah, so I think that's where we're at, discussion is like, oh, sorry. That's where we're at right now for discussion, is, is this something, you know, you know, Mary's point of, do we need to bring this to legal counsel, you know, and have them look at this part and this procedural part? Is this something that we want in there? I think that's kind of where we go.
Right. Well, I see this, I see the part after, I'm looking at a hard copy, so that maybe is making it more confusing, but at the end of, after potential remedies, we have school board adoption, and then another page starts with complaints. When it starts with complaints, that appears to be fairly procedural to me.
Right, and that's, that's less than.
And that's not a policy.
Well, right, and that's kind of what we were saying, or, yeah, right.
So I guess what I would like to see is, is looking at the policy part?
Yeah, the first two.
That's what we would be approving in November, or up for a vote in November.
Yeah, I think we look for consensus, but I mean, that's, I think, what we would plan in bringing forward for the most part is those first two pages, unless people want to go.
Jonathan, did you have something?
I will just thank each of you for what sounds like five or six hours of pure fun.
I mean, I would agree with Enrique, it was pretty fun.
I would submit that each of us owe you a debt of a beverage of choice at a later date for taking this on. What I, my favorite part of this whole thing that I see here is, number one, it's, it basically says, be an adult and have a conversation with somebody you think has committed a violation. It doesn't require you to go tell the chair. And so I just, I think that's a really good first step when somebody has a concern. So I appreciate your work.
And I'd echo that. This was a hard policy to get through with all of us. So I do appreciate the work of the subcommittee, and it looks good to me, and I'd like to see it come back at our meeting in November for a vote, so.
So let's just clarify what that, the two pages?
The two pages. Well, we do want you to at least look at the other two for the supplementary, because some of those are procedures, but they are embedded, and we did take some, we did go through there to make sure that there wasn't any contradictions with the, the high-level policy. So, and there is, you know, we've, you know, there were other considerations when you look at some of the emails we do receive and things like that. I mean, there's a, you know, what people believe and what's going on. I mean, we've had some, you know, some, you know, comments here that are not any, even in the jurisdiction at all of the board, and people want to do a complaint or something like that. So we need to consider those of how we handle those consistently and fairly, and that's why these are just kind of listed down here, and they were cleaned up, and they were, like I said, not decoupled, but definitely not contradictory. So we did have a couple of discussions about some of these. I know we removed quite a few, so I think that it is worth everyone looking at that to see if there's anything they want to bring up to the top, or if the procedure should be, you know, again, supplementary, but maybe not the policy, policy, that sort of thing.
I think for each of us, to spend a little time and review it, and.
Homework. I think, I mean, right, and I think, you know, I don't know how detailed we're going to get into it, but I mean, you know, I think we had differences of the community, and I, you know, myself personally, I think, I see the point of this, but then I also see reality, and I think this is a little too prescriptive. But I mean, it just depends on the level, but I think that was our thought about having legal counsel look at it, was just to have a view of, okay, like, you guys deal with the scenarios way more often than we do, what's your opinion on this? If this is something that should belong in policy or not? So, I mean, I'd be supportive of having that looked at, you know, at least before the next, you know, if possible, for the next meeting, just to have an opinion on that. I think it, I don't know. That's just my opinion. Just the whole thing in, as a whole.
Right.
Like, that there isn't a liability that we're making, because, I mean, we're not lawyers.
Well, this last page, you're referring to different ways of complaints come in. And there is, you're right, there's no way you can hit on all the complaints that might come in, and the way they're going to come in. This is more about school board members than it is about community members making complaints about people. And I don't believe that we, you know, if we want to put a procedure about how we go about it, I think we've already outlined that in the policy, these complaints are all samples, and it's very prescriptive, and it still can't cover everything. So I would not want this in the policy, and I am not in support of taking the lawyers, getting a lawyer to look at a policy that governs ourselves in the end, is all dictated by a statute. And we want this to be a learning process, not a punitive process. So I don't see a purpose in having a lawyer come in and spending the money on a lawyer that, we don't have the money to spend, to be frank, so. Well, I would suggest then that the, the rest of the board look at this and see if there's anything down there on the, on the last two pages that you want to bring up to clarify, because again, the top two pages were meant to be somewhat nebulous for that reason in particular, and there may be, and we, and I'm not going to say that this was kind of our parking lot, but in a kind of way it was. So, so there may be some things you read in there that should be brought up into the, because they are, it's not just the complaint, you know, frivolous or non-flimous, there's three or four separate sections in here that ended up as the parking lot. So looking through that, I think, is pretty important, particularly if you think anything up above needs to be clarified. And that's exactly where we, where we ended up with some of these statements, and that's why they're not bulleted or numbered either. But we did take some work to look through there and make sure we at least weren't, again, and we did take some stuff out that was duplicative as we started to move things up. Right, and I respect the work that you've done, and if the board wants to continue looking at the, this last part, to see if there's something that we should be incorporating in the policy, that'd be fine, but I guess I also have an expectation that we will be able to.
But I guess I also have an expectation that we will be able to take this to a vote at our next meeting. This policy has been, you know, on the agenda for months. It's a policy that we hardly ever have to execute. And we have a lot more important things that are going on right now that we need to focus on educating our students. So I really would like to move forward on this policy. And if, you know, if everyone's more comfortable or feels in agreement that they want to look at these complaints and see if we can incorporate if something's missing into the policy, I'm all for it. That'd be great. But I would like to have, come with the expectation that we will be voting on the policy at our next meeting.
And I-
Okay, Jonathan?
I was just going to say, I think, I think the, the group, the group on the committee did the, did the initial work, created the initial policy. They're asking, what I hear is they're sort of asking us to also review the other pieces. And I think that that's reasonable. And so I, I, I'm with you, Lee. I, I'd like us to be able to move forward with this. I think everybody would like to be able to move forward with this. I also think that it's, if, if it, if it winds up on one, two more agendas instead of one more agenda before a final approval, if we can work in between or if, if we can have conversations in between with the folks on the committee to, if we have concerns, I, I do think we should respect their work by reviewing what they've given us to see if there's anything we think should be incorporated also into the policy. And if, if that creates some, some changes before the next meeting, that's great. Hopefully we can send that and get it approved. If it, if it delays for one more meeting.
Technically, this is a first reading of a brand-new policy anyways because we did rewrite it.
Well, but our process is that they can, the policy can change through the four times that we presented. And this has been presented at minimum of four times.
Yeah.
So it does change as we go through the policy. And part of the big change that was done is because I asked for a subcommittee because we were getting nowhere as we discussed the policy, so. Michael?
Could I just get some clarification going forward? The policy is written so we can self-government, correct? We have ethics, procedures in our self-governance. And if we violate those, we want to involve as few people as possible in correcting that action. Where I got confused, and I did go through this, and, and thank you for all this work, Mary. I did spend time with it. Is this felt more to me like an outside complaint gets filed against a board member from an outside person? And what procedure do we take? And it's a little different than the first two pages in that. It means a, a complaint goes in writing, it goes to every board member. That feels a little different than the spirit of, um, hey, did you know your, we already want to a vote on that, we're not speaking in board voice, or, you know, that sort of a conversation. So that's where I'm getting a little confused in, um, that the self-governance part is how do we navigate the policies we've established for ourselves and hold each other accountable? Is that correct? As opposed to someone complains to the board chair that someone violated?
It's actually kind of both.
Is it?
Yeah, it is actually both.
It is both.
Yeah, it's both, truly both. And that's the thing about the scenarios.
Right. Well, it's both in that it's a governance policy.
Right. But-
Well, because we govern ourselves, yeah.
Because there isn't anyone in the school district administration that's going to do anything with that. It's all at our table, no, even if it's outside, whatever. It has to be us doing it on ourselves as school board members. So it can involve everyone, but we have to be the ones that hold ourselves accountable.
Okay. Everyone's good, we'll move on. Policy 603, curriculum development. Is that Jeff? I guess you have both of them, Jeff?
Good evening again. Again, this is, these two policies are before you this evening based on the feedback from the last meeting. We made an adjustment to make, on the last page of each policy, the meeting time component exactly the same. They were different. And so it was pointed out, I think, by Director Nelson that we needed to get those to match. So we did. So those have been the only updates per our conversation in the last couple of meetings.
Okay, and this is also a second reading coming to the board for a potential vote in November. Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I thought it was a third reading, actually, but that's just-
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think it is a third reading and I don't see any changes on it, but I'm fine.
The way, the way it's being, the way it's being done right now, this is the third reading.
Yes.
And the fourth reading will be when we take a vote.
Yes.
Did I say that wrong?
I think you said it was the second reading.
Well, it's listed under second reading.
It's set under-
I don't know.
Because the way this is being is, it's a little bit confusing. Board policy review is actually truly the first time it's presented.
Correct.
Then it's a first reading, then it's a second reading, and then it's approval. So that is the fourth time it's presented to the board. So it does appear confusing the way we're doing these numbers. But that's, that's making sense to our policy expert person. So we're going with it.
And I, whatever reading it is, I think nothing has changed. And I think we discussed this and we're, in my opinion, I thought we were all good with it, so, yeah.
So it'll come to a vote on, in November. So on to sixteen, six sixteen.
Thank you. Uh, six sixteen, very similar. We changed the, the verbiage from the, uh, on the fourth page to match the meeting time on six oh three, so they both were consistent.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent Relations, Dr. Stallow.
Great, I just wanted to take some time. I want to express again my incredible gratitude to our staff for the amazing work that they continue to do to our students who continue to show resiliency and to our families who, um, you know, are navigating a, a lot of things during this public health crisis. And I think that's the piece of it as we share some updates with you this evening that we continue to focus on. This is a public health crisis. No one has chosen this path. No one wants this path. Everyone is making decisions and doing the best that they can for the health and safety of our students. And as I go around the district, I continue to see our staff do unbelievable things from our custodian that I talked to last week, who really is spending his days wiping railings with hundreds of steps in buildings. Again, I'm sure there's other things that need to be done and he would like to be doing, but that's what it's taking right now to keep our staff safe. A first-grade teacher who was doing a direct instruction lesson in math and had her students at home, her home hybrid students with a, a whiteboard and her kids in the classroom with a whiteboard. And she would do a, a piece of lesson and say, show me your work, and was immediately able to assess the students in front of her and the students at home in hybrid. Amazing. An art teacher who is teaching from home with a classroom monitor supporting the students that are in the classroom and then again, other students on a Google Meet at home. And we got a chance to see some of the incredible artwork that the students have displayed. And lastly, a high school choir classroom with entirely synchronous singing and teaching and learning, where kids, you know, we asked the question, we said, are kids actually singing at home? And they are. So again, I just cannot say enough thank yous to our staff in every corner of this district and every department and in every school. I know this isn't that much fun. It's really not been a lot of fun since March. It's really hard work and it's really serious work. And again, we're in a public health crisis. So I just want us to remember that as we talk tonight about some of the changes that we're seeing in our state and in the metro around COVID case numbers and the position that that puts our public health experts in as they give recommended direction to school districts. And the next couple of weeks, the next couple of months are going to be difficult and we're going to be making decisions and listening to our health experts all along the way. So I just want to be sure that, that our community understands that while there's some flexibility that districts have been given in terms of how we approach a hybrid learning model, we really will continue to hear the recommended directions from our Scott County experts and partners and then our Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education experts. And what I'm going to explain to you in a little bit is some of the, the, um, things that we're seeing coming out of different counties and why. And I'm hoping that that brings some clarity this evening. But the thing that I'd like to start with this evening, we've gotten a couple of questions on Redtail Ridge being a polling place and some concerns about that happening with COVID. So Redtail Ridge is, uh, is the only school that's a polling place for us. And it is because in that precinct, there simply is not another building, a public building that can be used. And Redtail's been a polling place for us for, for years. And I just, I asked Jim to share a little bit tonight of some of the additional precautions. We always have safety precautions at our schools when there's an election, but the additional precautions that are put in place. So thanks, Jim.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, School Board, Dr. Stallow. So we are cognizant that we are in a pandemic right now. So we, uh, Maureen Mullin and I, we're out at Redtail today. Typically, we would have a half gym for elections. This year, to accommodate social distance, uh, we're going to have the whole gym open. We also, a couple of years ago, we installed a, a, a door pole so that we can separate, um, uh, voters from entering the school building proper. So, and we've been through this before. I think we had the primary this year and, um, our election judges are former teachers or they were at that time. And we were highly complimented on our work and I think we'll be in great shape.
That is my polling place. So on, um, over the years, there's very little going into the building. And now, now at the primary, it was, we didn't, I didn't even go into the building. It was-
Correct, right in the gym and right out.
Using the gym door, right in, right out. Feel very good about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim, very much. Um, I'm going to invite Joe to come up. Um, and as he's coming up, I just want to share with you a little bit, and, and I know you're all following numbers, both the Scott County numbers and you're following what's happening across the metro. And a couple of things that we might be hearing some different, um, recommended direction that different counties are getting. And I just want to share my knowledge of that right now as I talk and work daily with other superintendents. So we know some of the counties, and I'm going to say Anoka County right now, is, is at an over thirty. And they are, as a county, the, the school districts in that county, because there was not an identifiable outbreak in a particular area, but rather the spread is community-wide, the, the recommended direction that MDE and the Minnesota Department of Health gave the schools in that county was to transition into distance learning. Differently, other counties whose numbers might be similar, because they were able to identify an outbreak in a particular facility or location, they might be having a different recommended, uh, direction to school districts in that county. But at the end of the day, with the superintendents that I've spoken with, they still are getting recommended direction from the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education. So while there appears that, that some folks in, throughout the state believe that it is really this local control and you as a board and I as a superintendent can make some decisions, when it comes to what the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education recommend and give us direction on, I need you to know, board members and community members, that I am going to follow the direction of our public health experts. And, and it, the decisions that we want are for our kids to be able to be in school in a safe way. And unfortunately, if the numbers continue to climb, we will have to be looking at a learning tran- transitional model for our secondary students. And I'm not saying that, um, to say that we're doing that right now, but I, I put out the email on Friday and I will continue to do that. When there's something that looks like there's potential change, that's what I'm trying to do to be transparent to our community so that they know the information that we know. We've been clear with the data that we review every week. So in addition to that county data, we're always looking at our staff absences and our student absences. We're looking at, in our departments, um, you know, if we've got any other concerns that we're unable to, to operate with. But I just want folks to know that we are taking this incredibly seriously and we are meeting constantly to review where we're at. And if we have to transition, um, we will be prepared and ha- and solidify those plans and be ready for that. And we'll communicate it as quickly as we're able to, as we watch the data. So with that, I did ask Joe this evening to just share with you all some updated, uh, number and data so that folks have a little bit more of a sense of what we as a district are dealing with and how it impacts our staffing and the other work that we're doing. Thanks, Joe, appreciate it.
Good evening, Board Chair Schimmick, Dr. Stallow, board members. As she shared, Dr. Stallow asked me to share kind of an update of where we are at with our numbers. Uh, when I stood here two weeks ago, I shared with you that at that time, we had ten positive cases. And that was actually through the first six weeks that we had had staff and students with us. In the last two weeks, we have added fourteen more. So we are now at a total of twenty-four cases. As I look at that, we have approximately sixty, a little more than sixty percent of those cases are student cases. Pretty evenly divided between elementary and secondary. One or two more cases in the secondary, but for the most part, they're pretty similar. A couple of different things that we're starting to see. You may not have heard, but the CDC did make a change within the last week or so around their definition of close contact. The change that they made was the fact that the fifteen-minute timeframe is now cumulative over a twenty-four-hour period. It's not fifteen minutes at one time. Now, because of that, we have started to have a couple situations recently where we've had to quarantine both staff or students when there has been a positive case. And I applaud our staff for really making sure that they pay attention to that, to be able to say, you know what? This is someone that I was with and worked closely with multiple times within that day. And so it's something actually that I'm, been working on a communication that's going to be going to staff to make sure that we continue to be very cognizant of that fifteen-minute timeframe and that distancing that we have so that we can make sure that, first of all, we can identify close contacts if there are going to be any, but also make sure that we can protect ourselves and protect each other in that situation.
Do you have some questions?
Do you have a question?
Yes. Is there a clarification on the quarantine and when the quarantine time is supposed to start? Is it starting when symptoms appear, when you think you were, or when you get the test?
So, two different terms that sometimes get mixed up, quarantine and isolation. So isolation refers to someone who has officially tested positive. And so for that person, isolation begins at the start of their symptoms. So they may not get tested till day two of their symptoms. Then we all know that test results can take anywhere from twenty-four hours to three days, depending on where you get those tests taken care of. But the actual isolation for that person who tested positive begins on day one of their symptoms. Quarantine refers to someone who was in contact with a person who tested positive. And that's a fourteen-day time period. And that begins when they last had contact with them. So we have situations where someone tests positive. We have to first figure out when were they in our building? If it's a student, if it's a staff member, we know that a little bit more. But when were they last in our building? We know that they were contagious for a forty-eight-hour time period before those symptoms began. Then we have to determine who did they potentially have that close contact with during those forty-eight hours. Because of our hybrid schedule and the fact that students are in the building and then not in the building for at least two days in many cases, that does help us out with that forty-eight-hour period. So we're really only looking at one day when we're talking about a group of students. Now, staff members, we have to talk a little bit more about that because those colleagues may be together on a daily basis, but.
Do we know anybody who contacted or became a positive test because of contact in the school? Or were the originating sources of-
So, great question. So, like I said, two weeks ago, when I shared with you, at that point, all of our cases had been contracted outside of our school building. Uh, we have now had, um, for sure, one, potentially two that we're still looking into, cases where there were contracted- where there were contracted within our building.
Okay. I was just thinking the numbers. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll continue, so that we've got a couple of things, just to remind the board that we've got a couple of things happening right now. We're continuing to work through the request change for a learning model, and we had about, again, over five hundred, I think, of those. We're continuing to work on that. I think the, the original date that we had given parents was that we would communicate that by, I think, November sixth, is that right, Kristi? Which we're still on tag four, right? We're, we're still on track to do that. And then we'll just continue to, as I said, we'll continue to monitor those numbers. You all know that we meet weekly with Scott County Public Health, and then included in that meeting are the, the area superintendents, as well as one of our representatives from our regional support team, who's also on that. And then we always follow up those meetings with our incident command team, where we get more data around our staff and student absences, and get reports from all the buildings, as well as all the departments, in terms of, of what they're seeing, what they're needing, so that we can be sure to, to support them. As I said, because right now, we know where the trend is, we're gonna continue to deepen and solidify plans, should we have to make a learning model change with our secondary students to distance learning. And again, we will communicate that as, as, as soon as we possibly can. Right now, we're gonna monitor, we'll see what the numbers look like this week, and then we'll see what our public health advisors say, and then we'll see what they look like next week as well. But again, I just, I want you to know, we are looking at this at all times, sharing the information that we know as soon as we know it, and really doing the best we can to ensure that our kids and our staff are safe, and we provide quality learning in whatever format that looks like.
Stacy?
Just one question, and I know this is getting the cart before the horse, but I, I, I do think, just from a preparation standpoint and a transition standpoint, if we go to distance learning at the secondary, you know, it's not gonna be necessarily, I mean, there's gonna be a little transition, right? I mean, there will be somewhat of a transition. And, and I think, I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify it for the public, is the AB goes away, correct?
Correct, thank you for saying that, yeah. The, the, you're exactly right. If we, if we are no longer in the hybrid model, then we've got all students learning in a distance learning model, but you're correct, the AB would go away at that point.
And just to clarify too, because we're having this change go on after quarter one, where there can be a transition of some kids that are going either way, but if we go to distance, then everyone's.
At the secondary.
At the secondary, I'm just talking specifically secondary, then if we come out in the future, let's just say, scenario, when we come out, they're gonna go back to how they would have been scheduled.
For the beginning of second quarter, right. So at the, and, and you know, if you recall, board, when we, when we designed the Ready to Learn plan, you know, one of the things that, that we were directed to do is, is to be able to build a plan that we could seamlessly go between models. And I don't know that there's anything as seamless, but that we could do it with, with as much, or as little disruption to the learning and teaching as possible. But, but Stacy, you're exactly right. If we were to go into distance learning, then, then right now, as we know in a hybrid model, we have students that are at-school hybrid, home hybrid, and DLA, Distance Learning Academy, but all those secondary students would be distance learning. And again, as you said, when we then would go back into a hybrid model, folks would, would go into the model that it has been communicated to them that they will be in for second quarter.
Okay, and I, I'll just clarify, I appreciate your comments regarding, you know, the comments about meeting with Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of, I know you and Joe meet on that weekly basis, and they have the recommendation from a health and safety standpoint. And I would, I mean, in my opinion, I consider you a education expert, not a health expert. So I, I do have comfort in knowing that, you know, the recommendation from a health standpoint, which I am not one either, we rely heavily on the experts in that area. And so I would think it'd be pretty difficult for myself to not follow what's, what that guidance is from a health and safety standpoint.
And I know that's difficult, you know.
And I get it, I mean, I know people want their kids at school, but.
Yep, and so do we.
I also think we're in a, right, we're in a health pandemic, and so I think we just have to kind of keep, obviously keep that at the forefront.
And I, I know the uncertainty is difficult for everyone.
Right.
It's, it's difficult for the senior son that I have at home. It's difficult for every one of our staff and our parents who are, are trying to plan. It's difficult then when we're in a routine and we think we kind of have the flow, and now we start hearing this, oh, gosh goodness, are we gonna have to change and switch? And so we have to talk about it, that it could happen without, you know, the last thing I want to do is get people, you know, fearful or in an uproar about a change, but I also, to your point, I know families have to plan, and I also don't want it to appear that we didn't know that, that the cases across the metro are rising. So it's, it's not an easy position for anyone to be in, in any role, and as I've said multiple times, the way we'll get through this is together, and staying together, and recognizing that we're all on the same team, and that team is to ensure that we do everything we can to help our students, to make sure that mission comes to life. And again, the reality is, there are different perspectives in how that's done. So I appreciate our staff, board members, I appreciate the continued learning and, and watching and monitoring and question answering that you're doing, and, and our families for the, the support and the, the questions that they ask that help us get better, because that's what we want this experience to be for our learners. Thanks.
Moving on, informational items. November sixteenth to the twentieth is American Education Week. I'm looking for feedback as to how we'd like to proceed with that. We usually go into the schools that week. I'm not sure whether, what our comfort level is about doing that, if, you know, we want to continue with that or not. I don't have a suggestion at this point, but if you wanna, if you have some great ideas about what we could do, that'd be awesome. And I'm not sure, I, I know that it's limited as to how many people can go into a school, but at the same time, it's also is.
I don't know about the.
Awesome when the board can go into a school and visit with the teachers a little bit.
Right.
Kind of to balance that, we could go with status quo of what we've done in the past. We could make some wonderful video and send it out to all the teachers. I guess if you'd give it some thought and get back to me if you have a thought on it, and I'll work with Terry and Martha scheduling-wise if we just, with whatever we decide to do, so. But kind of a heads up, that it's the sixteenth to the twentieth of November. And then I have no comments from anyone from public forum, or for the public forum. Those notes or comments should have been given to Martha by noon today with the notation that it was to be read tonight, so that it's, it's clear. Not. So if there's no other business, I would adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.